2017, is now called order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Badami.
Here.
Commissioner Hudes.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Janoff.
Here.
Vice Chair Kane.
Here. Thank you. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the Commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any subcommittee reports this evening? You've been getting off easy lately. And we move to verbal communications. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process. It's a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission, conducting its business on behalf of the town and citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Written comments about agenda items submitted to the staff to staff prior to a meeting are very helpful and always welcome. At meetings of the Commission, there are two opportunities for member of the public to participate. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. And then any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the Commission tonight during the verbal communication period or during the consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into a staff member, and please print your name clearly, so that I can have a chance to not embarrass myself when I mispronounce your name. For anyone who intends to speak this evening, I ask that when you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone, so that you are speaking directly into it. Keep in mind, there's a three-minute time limit. When you have 30 seconds, the yellow light will come on. That's not the end. You've got 30 seconds left. Then the red light comes on, and that is the end. Do we have any cards this evening? I have one for verbal communications. Angelina Dornar.
Hello, Angelina Dornar, proud resident of Yonah Grove. I am seriously worried about traffic, and I think that we need to take a much more aggressive standpoint on traffic than what we've been doing in the past. You guys know better than anybody how much development we have going on. Alberta Way is going to be deliberated and decided at the appeal on Tuesday, and then two weeks later, the Shell Board. Then you've got all these other development projects that are going to be impacting Highway 9 and 17 drastically in Santa Cruz. You're our first line of defense as far as making sure that development does not exceed transportation capacity. It's the most important goal in our transportation element of the general plan. Plus, we need to be sure that these qualitative factors are considered in addition to the quantitative factors that we seem to only hear about. They're just as important, and the people in this room and the people out there know our traffic better than someone who just looks at it for an hour. In addition, you're the only ones who can mitigate. If you approve a project, no one sees the plans for traffic mitigation. The council doesn't see it. You guys are responsible for making sure that the mitigation measures that they're putting forth on these developments are adequate to make sure that we do not violate the general plan. And in that connection, you really need to rethink that work is done differently. Work environments are not the same as they used to be. There's long tables like this, and they sit right next to each other, just like eggs in a carton. They all have their little safe spaces. They may occupy six by six at a max. So some of the things that are being considered as far as number of parking spaces, and obviously the number of bodies, is way out of line. Next time you go by the intersection of Mussal and Highway 9, instead of saying Mussal, say Miss Sal. We lost him on Friday, September 1st. In that crosswalk, the lights were flashing. He was about three steps away from the sidewalk to be able to get to the diner for his breakfast, like he did every morning. So every time you go through that intersection, I have been asking for a light at this intersection. This is the fifth time I've asked you guys, you and the council, in the last three years. And so when you go by that intersection again, just think about all the people who knew him and loved him, and don't let it happen to anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards for the speakers, so I'll move on to the consent calendar. And we have one item on the consent calendar at this time. Any member of the Planning Commission or any member of the public may request that any item be removed from the consent calendar. What we have tonight, item one, is approval of minutes of the September 13th, 2017, meeting of the Planning Commission. Are there any comments on consent? Yes, Commissioner?
Although I recused myself, I did view the meeting.
Thank you.
I just had a question for staff. I noted in the minutes, and I'm pretty sure this is typical, but when we discussed the proposed changes to the fence ordinance, there was a whole lot of recommendations. And so I assume, will council be getting verbatim minutes? Or what? Because right now, it's just summarized that the comments from the Commission will be passed along.
Council will receive verbatim minutes.
Okay, that will include all of our recommendations. Okay.
Correct.
Other comments. Commissioner Badami.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the consent item consisting of the approval of the minutes for September 13th, 2017.
Any discussion? Then I will call the question. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Could we get a second?
Pardon? Ah. Could I get a second, please? Commissioner?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We move now into the public hearings portion of our agenda, and consider item two, which is 300 Marchmont Drive Conditional Use Permit U-12002. Project location is Marchmont Drive. Applicant, property owner, Mark Silva of the Hillbrook School. This is an annual review of an approved conditional use permit modification to increase school enrollment for an existing private school, Hillbrook, on property zoned HR1, We have a desk item on this matter. Have all commissioners had time to review this item? Okay. Ms. Puga, I understand you'll be giving tonight's report.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. In November of 2015, the Town Council approved a six-month review of the conditional use permit and approved a request to increase the school enrollment by 33 students for the 2016-2017 school year. In August of 2016, Hillbrook School vested that CUP by increasing school enrollment. In October of 2016, the Planning Commission approved an annual review of the CUP and request to increase the school enrollment by the second round of 33 students for the 2017-2018 school year. Pursuant to Condition 19, the Town's traffic consultant, W-Trans, completed a video review of the traffic count for the fall 2017 semester on September 5th, 6th, and 7th. As discussed in the report included as Exhibit 4, the three days did not exceed the maximum of 880 daily vehicle trips. While the report did find that the census data exceeded the manual count by more than 5%, the manual count did not exceed Hillbrook's maximum allowable vehicle trips of 880, and therefore, the school is considered to be in compliance with Condition 19. Hillbrook School may also designate 10 days per calendar year as exception days, which shall not exceed 960 daily vehicle trips. September 8th of the fall 2017 semester had been identified as an exception day and had 712 vehicle trips, which is under both the number of maximum allowable daily vehicle trips for an exception day and for a non-exception day. And Conclusions recommends approval of the annual review and a request for an additional 33 students for a maximum of 414 students for the 2018-2019 school year. There is a desk item before you this evening, which contains public comments received after the distribution of the staff report, and a response to some of those public comments from Parks and Public Works staff. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available along with Parks and Public Works staff and the Town's traffic consultant, W-Trans, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Puga. We have questions for staff. Commissioner Badami.
The staff report was written prior to us receiving a desk item from Ms. Elliott, which is Exhibit 8. After reviewing Ms. Elliott's letter, is it still staff's opinion that the applicant is still in compliance with their CUP?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question. I understand Condition 19 is a random traffic count for three days each semester, but as was pointed out in Ms. Elliott's letter, and then there's also in terms and conditions of the CUP, that there are certain days they can spell out where they can exceed their count of 880 days. And I understand the cap goes up to 960. What monitoring is done to check on those days where they exceed to make sure that they don't go over the 960, if any? I mean, is it the school's counting mechanism themselves, or something else?
It's the same counting mechanism for exception days and non-exception days, which is the census data.
It's just that the W-Trans doesn't basically audit and do the manual observation except for on those three days, then?
So the condition doesn't read that they have to choose a day as part of the three days where an exception day is called out? I understand that that was included in the letter, but W-Trans did have information on September 8th, which was an exception day, that they were still under the 960 and the 880.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, thank you. Trying to sort through all of the data in the original staff report and the subsequent addenda, and try to understand this. So am I correct that there are three different mechanisms of counting, census, metro, and manual, which is video?
That's correct.
And I see in the recommendation most recently, it says, "Staff recommends that Hillbrook work with census to recalibrate the sensors at the beginning of each semester." It sounds like that's a process improvement that's being proposed because of the discrepancies between the counts?
That's been recommended by staff due to the increase in the difference between the manual count and the census data. So staff's recommendation was to recalibrate census to try and address that.
So as a recommendation, can that be a requirement, or is it, can it only be a That they, you know, a requirement that they recalibrate the sensors at the beginning of each semester?
So I'm not sure that the Hillbrook folks, the applicants, are aware of that recommendation. They probably did see the desk item. But so they may be able to answer whether or not that's something they're willing to do. We'll look through the exact conditions to see if that's possible. At this point, I don't believe we can modify conditions. So this really probably does fall into recommendation category. However, we'll pull the language to see what options there are.
Okay, well, maybe we can come back to that after we've heard some testimony and try to clarify that.
Commissioner Badami.
This might be a question for the town attorney, Mr. Schultz. So the CUP references a full day without specifying whether it means 12 hours or 24 hours. And if you included a count for in excess of 12 hours, it could alter the count. So what does a full day mean?
Again, I'll go back and read the exact conditions and see what the interpretation could be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Janoff.
One more question regarding the CUP item 19. It calls for three days of count. The W-Trans did three consecutive days. Is there anything requiring consecutive days
Just looking at the language, it doesn't talk about consecutive or random. The past two reports that we've done for Hillbrook have just been three consecutive days, and so that's what we've used going forward.
Is there a method that warrants that approach, or is that, I mean, is that a convenience of the contract with W-Trans?
I can defer that to W-Trans. They're here this evening.
I'm Mark Spencer, Principal Traffic Engineer with W-Trans, primary author of the monitoring reports that we've been working on for the past year on behalf of the town. And the question regarding three consecutive days versus three random days, I believe the CUP says three random days each semester. And working out the scope and in terms of the efficiency, we chose to do three consecutive days versus, say, you know, one day, one week, and then picking another day a few weeks later. The reason for that is when we set up, it does specify video monitoring, and then you manually count the cars that you see on the video. So in order to set up a camera and go through that cost and that effort, it's set up and it's left up there for a little over three days' time, and then the camera is taken down and the data is processed. So that's why it's done on three consecutive days. I don't know that statistically there's any difference. We happen to just pick three random days during each semester. We don't consult with the school about that. We pick three random days that are going to be whatever they might be, typical days that are out there, typically a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We do see variation on those days. As a result of that, we do see certain spikes on certain days. But, and that's, we do monitoring at several schools throughout the Bay Area, and that's a fairly standard procedure.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, do you have a follow-up. Regarding the selection of the particular three days, was there any consideration given to the extracurricular events at the school, such as sporting events?
No, we, particularly with the fall, we set the calendar, we set our count calendar knowing when the fall semester has begun. We did not, in this case, consult whether or not there are sporting events or other events. What we do, however, is when we pull census data, and we've got the entire year of the census data, and that's 24-hour data that we can look at, we can see whether or not, on a 24-hour basis, there are any violations or that there are certain spikes. We also can look at what happens before 7:00 a.m. or after 7:00 p.m. by looking at that data. And so we have a sense of what that means. The 12-hour period, by the way, and I think the CUP says a day, not a full day in the language, but I'd want to defer to make sure that that's correct. But the day is defined, in this case, as making sure that we cover school activity hours, which are, the reason it's 7:00 to 7:00, which is when we do our surveys, is that the school hours are kind of defined, I think, as, you know, 8:00 to 6:00 or 6:30, something like that. It doesn't mean there can't be events at night, or athletic events, or things that happen. And if you look at the numbers, they go up marginally, 6, 10, 12 cars, something like that, on certain evenings, not on all evenings. There's not a lot of that, except perhaps on exception days. But even then, we're not seeing a violation of the 880 or even the 960 on the exception cap. And that's looking at it on a 24-hour basis.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, you had a question?
I was thinking about Commissioner Hudes's comment. The, as far as the difference between the manual readings and the census counts, it says clearly in the traffic count monitoring that if it's more than 5% difference, then they're out of compliance. So I understand from the letter from W-Trans that, you know, in aggregate, they're not in violation of the numbers in the CUP in terms of caps. But the fact is, it does say in here that they're out of compliance if the readings are more than 5% different. So are we supposed to be proving an exception, or?
There's an "and" there. So it's both.
It's both.
The percentage and the number for the total daily trips. They have to be out of compliance with both of those.
So if they'd have to violate both in order for them to be out?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Hudes?
In the memo dated September 27th, desk item, under spring manual count, it says, "As a result of an error, the required three-day manual counts for the spring 2016 semester were not counted." What staff's opinion about how significant it is, how significant an error is that in terms of being able to monitor the situation with traffic there?
I'll defer that to a Parks and, Parks staff.
Lead Director of Parks and Public Works. So in terms of the significance, if Hillbrook was close to the numbers, then we'd certainly want to have all that monitoring done. In this particular case, the work was, the monitoring error was on the W-Trans side, not the school side. But the Hillbrook numbers through the census data have been significantly low, below the threshold number. So it hasn't been a concern from the Town's perspective to this point.
Okay, thank you. I was looking for Town's calibration about that. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public portion of the public.
Let me answer the questions then. As to the question of whether you could interpret days differently, you certainly could. So if you feel that the hours from, that they did the study, that should be extended for a longer period up to the 24 hours, you have that ability to make that interpretation, and not just a recommendation, but an interpretation of CUP under Section 25. And you could also require additional calibration under Section 25 also, if you find that necessary.
So we can, in essence, amend the CUP?
They wouldn't be amending. That would just be an interpretation of those. Both those sections are, would be interpreting those as to what the day means, and that interpretation obviously could be appealed to the council, but we're not amending the CUP. But you're providing an interpretation through this hearing and through the review period.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'm going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the Commission for up to 10 minutes. Do I understand Mr. Silver and Mr. Hammers will be speaking to us tonight? State your name and address for the record, and adjust the microphone so that you can speak directly into it.
Great, thank you. Mark Silver. I'm a resident of Los Gatos, and also the head of school of Hillbrook School, resident of 206 Brook Acres Drive, and in this case, 300 Marchmont Drive, Hillbrook School. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to talk with you tonight. You know, a little over two and a half years ago, we, the Town Council, approved a new conditional use permit after a lot of conversation. The Planning Commission was, you know, involved with that, a lot of community engagement. And we are very proud of the work that we have done over the last two and a half years to abide by that conditional use permit and to work really, really hard to mitigate traffic and to be great neighbors. And even in the conversation tonight, and I think I can, I'm safe in saying this, the relationship with the neighborhood has improved dramatically, and I think both sides are working really hard to get along. And we're trying to make the conditions in that neighborhood as great as it can possibly be. And so we are committed to working with the Town, and we're working with the neighborhood to meet the conditions. We submitted a letter back in late August, and I just, that's too small, but I just want to quickly, you know, hopefully, I know you've had a chance to read it. But I want to highlight, overall, more than anything, how much work we've put into meeting these conditions, you know. So we have a person whose primary responsibility is overseeing transportation, and she spends a lot of time working to make that happen and to make sure that we are, have the biking and the walking and the carpooling and the shuttling to school. And the results have been significant. And so over, you know, since, over the last two years, we, our traffic has dropped dramatically, and we have not violated the conditional use permit. And, you know, that is a huge accomplishment that the school's been able to reach. And that's really up, you know, it's parents and students and a community who have come together. You know, as members of Safe Rush to School know, you know, we have been an know, as members of Safe Routes to School know, you know, we have been an active member of that group. And in part, you know, I think one of the things we've been able to bring to that conversation is a success story, is like, what does it look like when this goes really well? And then working with that group to try to help the entire town of Los Gatos deal with what is really challenging traffic. So I want to show just a couple of the numbers. First of all, first of all, just from an enrollment standpoint, just to, so we're all looking at the same thing. Last year, we started the year around 3:39. We actually finished the year around 3:45, 3:46. On average, we had about 342 students last year, and so, you know, that, so if you, over the course of the year, we grew slightly. This year, we started the year at 3:57. And so, and that's where we are today. And so, you know, that's a growth over the last two years of about 42 students. And then, so what happened with traffic? This is going to be hard to read, but if you look at the general trends here, the blue is back in 2013, 14. This is month-by-month. The red is 2014, 15. The yellow is 2016, 15, 16. And then the purple is 2016, 17. And what you'll see is that over the course of the past four years, we have significantly dropped traffic. To be specific, you know, month-by-month average traffic has dropped anywhere between 15 and 23% over the last four years. And of significance, after adding students last year, seven out of nine months saw a decrease in average traffic. We are working really hard to do this well and to do right by the neighborhood in terms of traffic. And then the last one, if you just look at September, that's the total number of cars in September. So back in 2013, we had 17,450 cars. Last year, we had a little over 14,000. That's 3,000 cars that we pulled off of the streets over the course of four years. We estimate we're dropping traffic by 27,000 to 30,000 cars a year versus what it was 2013. I imagine there are very few organizations, or anybody in the town of Los Gatos, who can say that they've actually significantly dropped traffic over a four-year period. We are taking this incredibly seriously, and we're working really hard to get it right. So now I'm going to turn this over to Chuck Hammers, who is the Chair of our Board.
Thank you. As Mark said, my name is Chuck Hammers. I live at 16230 Shannon Road here in Los Gatos. I wanted to, since I know it's going to come up and talk about the counter, I just wanted to talk briefly about why the school chose the third party of census to do the counting. What was very important was that we were able to get data to the town directly from accounting mechanism to them without us being involved. So the way the counters work is, there are electromagnetic sensors in the ground outside our gate, and they are about 20 feet apart. So there's a redundancy of an exit A and an exit B. So if one doesn't catch it, the other can, and then we take the higher count on the day. You will, you will see that one of the counters went down this summer, and because of our short staff and census person being away, it didn't get caught right away. And that may have been one of the issues on why we were, our census was off by 9%. This came as quite a surprise to us. We just found out five days ago that the census was off 9%. So we have contacted census, and they're going to get right on this to try to figure this out. They publicly advertise that they are within 5%, just like tube counters and everything else. So I think it's very important to them also. But, but to have that trust that we're not taking data out of something, like the way the tube counters work is, we have to go out and pull the data out of a tube counter, and then we would have to then send it into the town. There isn't such a mechanism for tube counters to automatically transmit data such as the census. So we're looking forward to hopefully getting this back into compliance. We're very pleased that we have been, as Mark said, two-plus years, and we've been way under our estimates, and that's what really matters. I live on Shannon, so I really feel the traffic from Blossom Hill and all the other schools. And we feel that we can be the guidepost for other schools through Safe Routes to show other schools how it can be done, how we can lower traffic, especially in the impact zones of the first half-mile right around the school. So we'd like to entertain any questions?
Commissioner Badami.
So as a backup to the census malfunction for that period of July 13, 2017 to September 12, do you have the metro count data?
I don't have it with me. We would, it can be pulled. So the, you have to go out and you can pull each day, and it's not an automated system like census is. But that could be pulled. And I think, I don't know if since, if you guys pulled data for those three days or not, or, no, so.
It probably would have been helpful tonight with some of the contention over this. But thank you. Thank you. Knowing that it's available and can be produced at some point for us, correct?
In many ways, the census, so it's a little bit of a tough thing. I'm not a traffic engineer, but one of the difficulties is, you're entering a gate into the, into the school, and cars are going very slow. So a lot of these mechanisms, especially like the tube counters, they like a constant speed because it can really, it has to measure, like a bus going by will know the front tire and then the back tire, and it'll tell, oh, that's a bus, because at 20 miles an hour, that far apart is a bus. And this is a school. What happens is, when you have kids walking around, you have, a lot of times, a car will stop, and the front tires may go over, then the back tires, and it adds a lot of uncertainty into a tube. And that was one of the reasons we didn't initially go with a tube, because it has to be out in the public right away, where the sensors are underneath the ground they can't be fiddled with, where a tube, you know, they wear out, they're that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions. Commissioner Hanson.
So the numbers are pretty impressive. And I used to sit on Safe Routes School a few years back, and I remember hearing, when you first started doing the shuttle, I was in the buses. I'm curious as to your perspective of what the, out of the different techniques that you're using in your transportation demand management system, what is really been the most impactful on getting those numbers down while your enrollment's going up?
It's definitely the shuttles. We added a fourth shuttle. You could jump in here too. But we're nearly 50% on the shuttle now.
Forty to fifty.
Forty to 50% in the morning. And it just keeps going up. It's starting to become much more hip to be on the shuttle now, and much more fun for the kids. And as they come in, they're really pitched, and this is what we do. And this is, we want to be a green community, and we want to be the example for Los Gatos, and that's the way we pitch our families. So, you know, we hope to keep lowering it and lowering it, even with the increased enrollment.
Okay, so it is the shuttle, and this is a private shuttle contracted by Hillbrook?
It is a private shuttle. It's a, it is a school bus company that does this specifically, though. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions on the approved bus stops and the exception days or events. Just so that I understand, the bus stops, are they the same this year as they were when this was reviewed last time, or have they shifted around?
So they shift slightly each year, and each year we then work with the, with, you know, the staff and then also the police department to look at those stops. They're minor shifts. Actually, to be totally technical, I'd have to pull up our transportation person who knows the exact moves that were made. Most of them are the same. I do know a couple of them shifted.
Okay. Because there were some comments last year about those stops, and so I wondered if any of those that received comment were addressed.
So we continue to work with the police and the town to, like, determine the safest place, you know, to have a stop. And that's been the, you know, that's the process that we're using to determine that.
Okay. And then, if I may, question on the events. You have exception days. I believe you're allowed up to 10. And so, am I correct that there are, there were 10 2017, 2018?
Yes.
And then, the evening events, there are nine of those. How do those relate to the exception days?
They don't necessarily. In certain cases, you'll see that exception days are evening events, but not in every case. And so, just for full disclosure, transparency, we added the list of evening dates as well. But they're not, it's not a perfect match. But we also are limited to 10 evening dates, and so that was the other reason that's on there.
Okay. And you've only chosen to exercise nine of the 10, is that correct?
We've only had nine, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. First to staff, who is the author of Exhibit 5? Is that something we put together from information they gave us?
Are those the bus stops?
Yes.
So that was provided from Matt Morley, the Parks and Public Works Director.
All right. So we have an Exhibit 5 that talks about approved bus stops. What happens at that bus stop? Do you have a school bus that runs from that point to the school, from the school to that point?
So it depends on which stop you're talking about. You know, we have several routes, and so there are multiple stops on each route.
Blossom Hill, the park, Shellborne, Saratoga, parking lot number one, North Parking, Vessona, and Kennedy Road are listed as bus stops.
So there's, so that we have four buses?
Okay.
And so there's different, so buses are taking different routes to school, and so they have multiple stops along the way.
They may stop at more than one of these.
They're stopping in more than one place.
And they're making one run. The bus leaves at 7:30, or you need to run to the other station real quick.
In most cases, yes. There is a bus this year that we have been shuttling from Miles in the morning that has made, so it's made, gone from Miles to the school.
Well, that's what I want to differentiate, the bus stops from the shuttle.
They're the same thing.
It says, "In addition, Hillbrook is providing a shuttle, in addition. Hillbrook is providing a shuttle that will run between Hillbrook, Miles Avenue, the library, Shihaddash multiple times before and after school."
So they're the same buses, but so that, so the buses, so they're, they're the same buses, we're using buses for multiple purposes. So there's a bus that comes in in the morning, that comes up, so there's a, there's a bus that starts at Miles, that comes up to school to drop off some employees, it then goes back out and picks up students at another stop, and then comes back to school. So in that case, that bus comes on and off. In the afternoon, there's a bus that runs on a regular basis to Shihaddash, which goes back and forth from the school to Shihaddash.
And that's because these locations have parking lots?
Yes.
And that's also the definition of multiple times?
Yes.
They're running more than once. Thank you. I have one other question, and it may be the $64 question. The letters we've received, and even the one that liked you, said, "Don't do it unless they can give us accurate data with accurate instruments to do the job that was promised." Now, that seems to be the deal. And I'm asking if you can guarantee that these devices you have in there will work.
So I can guarantee we'll keep working with the town. Neither Chuck nor I are traffic engineers. And so we are, we have spent many years working with the town to try to come up with systems which are transparent and which work. And so, you know, those three days, we know were off by 9%. And we also know the previous year, they weren't off by 9%. So we have six days of data. We also have, you know, then many years of census data of 24 hours a day at the school. And so we are working so hard to manage our traffic. So, you know, we are open to the suggestions. We are working with census. You know, again, we found out about the 9% five days ago. And so we've reached out to census, and we're trying to figure out why were those three days further off than previous days have been. We don't know if those were anomalies, if those are, you know, if that has been a consistent trend over the last few weeks. We just don't know.
You didn't know about the 9% until five days ago, and you may not have known that one of the key sensors was out for a couple of months. And what I'm saying is, clearly, you have done an extraordinary amount of work and expense to get this right. Your numbers look very impressive. But this is a deal breaker for some folks. And I'd make it a priority going forward to not find out two months later, and not find out key data five days before the hearing, because it's very important to them. And it's important to the heart and soul of the CUP. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two cards from the public. Patty Elliott, followed by Barbara Dobbs. You'll have three minutes, Ms. Elliott, and when you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on.
Thank you. Patty Elliott, Marchmont Drive. Frankly, you've covered a lot of the issues that I raised in my letter, and I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to read it and to study it. You know, again, the main concern, as Commissioner Kane just verbalized, is that under the CUP, there's--
You need to take the mic with you, or your voice will not be picked up.
There's very specific requirements, thank you, for counting, including if and when there's a violation in terms of the numbers. And I really do appreciate all the work that the school has been doing, including, we got our summers back, which was, which was really nice. But, but the key is to have a reliable, accurate, verifiable counting system to the trip, because the CUP is all based around that. And, you know, we're, we're already at, on the first day, 811 cars with only 357 students. On a day where there were no after-school competitions, you know, that's, that's a concern. And so, to me, that's, that's critical, and I agree, it's a deal breaker. And this is not a new issue. I was up here a year ago saying the same thing, pointing to, you know, the numbers for last year. And unfortunately, since then, it hasn't gotten better. It's gotten a lot worse. So I don't know what, what the reason is, but I think it's absolutely critical that it, we find out before we add additional students. On that point, I mean, it doesn't really seem like they need an additional 33 right now, because they're not even, you know, they have that 24 seats already unfilled. So I don't think it would be a huge detriment to the school for the commission to say, "Okay, we're going to put a pause on this. We need more study. You know, we need to develop what is a reliable, accurate, verifiable system." In terms of, I just want to also point out that the counts are supposed to be random. They should not be conducted three days in a row at the very beginning of the school year, where there were no after-school competitions. The W Trans can now look on the calendar and see when those sports activities are taking place, and should schedule those counts at least on some of those days. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? I have one. Ms. Elliott, you are an attorney-at-law?
Yes.
And I appreciate your extensive, detailed letter, and you make a heck of a case for no enrollment increase should be permitted until we have reliable, accurate, verifiable counting system in place. Two questions. If they did have an accurate, reliable counting system in place, would your concerns be mollified or mitigated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Second question is, have they violated the CUP, in your opinion? In what manner may they have violated it?
It's, well, it, I guess if you assume no more than, let's round up to 10% error, it doesn't seem that way. But again, there, the count that was done didn't include any after-school sports activities. And there's a huge difference there in the afternoons. I understand that in the mornings, so many kids are on the bus. That's great. It's low traffic. But in the afternoons, when there's after-school sports competitions, there's a lot of traffic, including the buses going back and forth. But a lot of the kids aren't on those buses in the afternoons.
So would you be saying, in the staff report and in your, again, extensive, excellent letter, I don't recall seeing ever that they violated their maximum numbers. So may I say that you are saying, had they had accurate recording devices, those limits might have been exceeded? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I can't say that. I don't know that. And so, so no, I can't say that. But, but I guess my point is that we shouldn't be getting to this point, where we already know that the system is flawed, double the amount that it's really allowed. And, you know, they're going to be adding more students. So there's no need to add the students now. They're not, it's not an entitlement that they're, that they're, that they have, that they, you have to agree to allow them to admit another 33 students. that you have to agree to allow them to admit another 33 students. And again, frankly, I don't feel like there's a strong need for them to do that right now, until we get set with an accurate, verifiable system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ms. Dodson?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Dodson, and I live on Marchmont Drive. I just wanted to make a couple points in response to what's been said. I wanted to point out that according to the CUP, you can modify conditions. It's in Condition 19. Let's see if I can find it. Okay. "The schools shall be considered..." Okay, "If the census data continues to demonstrate ongoing noncompliance, the discrepancies shall trigger..." No, sorry. I'm having trouble finding it. Okay, I'm not going to be able to find it. But in fact, I found it a few minutes ago. It is possible to modify the CUP, right? Yes.
Take a look at 25, please.
It's 25? Oh, okay, here it is. It is 25. "If new or more effective data collection methods are available to compute traffic counts, then the conditional use permit may be modified and/or revoked as allowed under the town code." Okay. Yeah, on the 24-hour situation, there are-- is quite a bit of traffic before 7:00 AM. Not so much after 7:00 PM. But on those, the 10 days when they have evening activities, yeah, that traffic is significant. And so, definitely should be counting for a 24-hour period. And I don't understand why you wouldn't, since it's a video system. So why wouldn't the video just keep running? And then you would count the 24-hour period. So that's on that. And then, I think, you know, Hillbrook has been doing a very good job, definitely. I think our concern is going forward as the school population does increase. You know, that will put pressures on the system, I assume. So, yeah, they've been in compliance, they've done a good job. Will they continue to do a good job? That's why it's so important to have a really reliable counting system. There have definitely been trust problems in the past, as you probably know. And so, I think this is a trust and verify situation, that we really should have, you know, an excellent kind of system. And then I'm wondering how they can improve the system. And I'm assuming Census is doing the best they can. And if this is the best they can do, then we're kind of in trouble. So that's my-- that's kind of a technical question. And then, let me see. So I guess I did want to reiterate the fact that the W-Trans accounts were done on days where there were no after-school sports events or activities. And these events and activities create extra traffic. It's very possible that disparities between Census and the W-Trans manual counts would be even greater on such days. Neighbors mentioned after-school traffic as a major cause of disruption in the neighborhood. Okay, thank you very much.
Questions for the speaker? I have a comment, and I thanked Ms. Elliott for her letter. I'd like to thank you for yours. It's very kind, very generous, very nice. Thank Hillbrook for the great job it's done over the years, in the past year, in controlling traffic. And you end with, again, "I hope you'll postpone Hillbrook until the school can provide an accurate, reliable, traffic counting system." If they provided an accurate, reliable accounting system, would your concerns be mollified?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't have any other speaker cards. Up. Come on down.
Good evening. My name's Vlado Herman. I live on Glen Ridge Avenue. I want to thank all of you for your volunteer work. I know it's an unpaid job, and I appreciate what you do. I've spoken now over three years, multiple times. I have two children at Hillbrook, and I'm on the Board of Directors. I'm the head of the Finance Committee. My 11- and 9-year-old are on the bus every morning. I drop them off at Manresa. We've had some council members come by, and I've invited them, and they've come. And I invite you also to come to see how we've made that work. It's really a community. As the head of the Finance Committee, I don't think we've mentioned it here, but if we do violate it, based on Census, there are large fines that Hillbrook is-- would pay, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So in the end, you can grant 500-- the town could have given us 500 students, it doesn't matter. We have to comply with our counts. And believe me, as the head of the Finance Committee, who has to answer to parents who pay a large tuition, I would hate to be writing checks. The town could use the money, but that's not our goal. One of our communication norms at Hillbrook is assume goodwill. All our children, every morning, it's up on the board. I do that in my work life, I really try. It's hard sometimes, but we're all in one community together. We're all in it together. We're not here to deceive. These are wonderful kids, who hopefully will change the world one day. There's a lot to change, but assume goodwill. I assume it with everyone out here, and hopefully you'll do that with us. Thank you for your time.
I have a question. You said, your children go to a bus stop?
Yes.
You drop them off in the morning, and you pick them up in the afternoon, and you invited us to see what that was like.
Yes.
Does that include dinner at Manresa?
Yes, absolutely.
What this guy?
We can-- we'll go Dutch, but, yeah. In fairness to your position, we wouldn't want to violate that.
Other questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. I have no other speaker cards, so I'm going to return to the applicant and provide them with five minutes to add any additional comment they desire.
Chuck Hammer's again. I kind of wanted to just take this back to where we started. And this was really about growing our middle school. And we wanted to create more opportunity for our 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. And my son Jude is lucky to be a 6th grader this year, and he's in the very first class that has added a third section of 6th grade. And there is so much excitement around these additional 15 or 16 kids, whatever it is, coming into the school from other places, and collaborating, and becoming part, and competitive. It's just, it's exciting to see what is happening at that school because of the addition of these kids. And I don't want to get away from that, because we can get caught up in these traffic numbers and whatever else, but we've done such a good job with the traffic. And a lot of that's really happened, as Vlado said, from the parents. They've bought into this. They've bought into, "We won't need to be better. We need to be better for our neighborhood." And these 450 parents, they're counting on this. They're counting on another section next year to come in, to next year's 6th grade, and then another one after that. And I would hate for a third-party failure of 4% counts to somehow derail the next tranche of kids coming in. It would be really sad to me. And it would just be a slap at these parents that have put so much effort into putting their kids on a bus, or carpooling, or riding their bikes, because they're all in. And we're proud of them. So, you know, it's more than just a count. It's, we've done a great job. The neighbors have said it, the traffic is way down. And it's important to have this next tranche. I understand the idea that we're not at full enrollment. The importance for that is, if you're going to enroll 350 kids, your max enrollment needs to be higher than that. Because to enroll 350, we need to give out, you know, roughly 400 acceptances, because not everybody comes. But you can't put the school in a position to violate a CUP by giving out more acceptances than you have room for. So we do need that room coming up. So thank you.
Questions for Commissioner Hootis?
Thank you. I understand that the traffic count is complex with the three different methodologies in resolving those. And we had testimony from some residents that even though they were not confident that the-- in the method, there was no reason to believe that the CUP was exceeded. However, they did state that the selection of the three days without sports events might be an issue. Do you have an opinion about how sports events impact the traffic? And if, for instance, three other days when there were sports events scheduled, is there any evidence either way that you would have exceeded the permitted number of trips?
No, because, again, we have two-- we've got four years of Census actually counting. We're not violating. What they're actually doing is they're counting versus, they're really checking the accuracy of Census. So if they're checking the accuracy on a 750-day versus a 790 or an 800-day, I don't know that the 9% comes up differently. It, yes, they're typically, on sports days, there are more. But, you know, as you can see, I think they talked about the one specialty day where we get to go to 960. We only got to 712. So even, we can't necessarily pick the right specialty day that we're going to go to 960, because, you know, sometimes our parents get all in and, you know, get 16 people in a minivan or something, and somehow get up there. So I don't know that picking three different days would prove anything differently on whether the Census was working or not.
Commissioner Hanson?
So I thank you for your comments, and I thank you for all your efforts to, you know, mitigate the traffic. And it seems like you've done a great job. What I heard is not anyone saying that there's a lack of compliance, but there's a mistrust thing, because there is a variance between when people count the traffic manually and what happens with the Census. So in addition to what you already said, what do you-- what can we say to the people that are having a mistrust issue because they're seeing differences in the data? What is Hillbrook going to do to try and get those numbers closer? I heard that you're getting in touch with Census. But, you know, this seems to be a problem that might persist. And so, you know, what can we tell these people?
So again, it's been five days. I traded a couple emails with Census today. They want to get it solved. We definitely want to get it solved. We think trust is more important than anything else between us and the neighbors, and the numbers have to be accurate. And, you know, we are going to solve this issue. And if it's solvable, we will solve it. And I do believe it is. It went for two years within the 5%. One sensor was down of the two, and the sensor's back up. So that may have been it. We need to figure that out. Because you take the higher count of the two, and if there's only one running, you may have had the other one, may have been a higher count on the day, and it didn't get-- that may have been the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Hootis?
Kind of along the same lines about, you know, not just reassuring the residents, but are there some ideas about how the town might be-- town staff might be more involved in your counts so that when we look at a report in the future, we would not necessarily have the situation that 60 days went by without a sensor, or that we have a systematic 8%, 9% error? Are there ways to actually involve the town staff in the process of counting that might help have more confidence?
That might be a better question for the town staff, but the way the data comes up--
I intend to ask that as well, but I'm curious if you have some ideas.
Yeah, the data comes up in two separate columns, an exit A and an exit B, as for redundancy. So, you know, they too, in posting their monthly, you know, might notice that one of the sensors was down. Obviously, it's, now that this has happened, I think we're all attuned to looking for it. You know, and Census was, the person, I guess, in charge was out of town for a bit, and they have to actually physically come out when that sensor went down, and drill a new hole in the street and put it in. So it's not a, it's not like flipping a switch or something that, on fixing it. So that was the original reasoning behind having redundancy, because, you know, things four or five years can wear out. They're battery-operated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Genof?
Regarding the tube counters, it seems like that would be a particularly accurate count with regard to the number of times a wheelbase goes over the tube counter. Notwithstanding, it may not know it's a bus or a smart car, but wouldn't you just take the total count and divide by two? And wouldn't that be a pretty accurate number?
Again, the tube count operator has also told us it's up to a 5% error. So they're both kind of quoting the same number.
And did the tube count data get provided at all? I mean, you mentioned that it's difficult to pull, but you didn't disclose whether you had provided the tube count data.
I don't know that we were asked for. We typically get asked for it, like if occasionally the whole census goes down for a day or two. It's usually an internet issue, because it's beamed, I think, it's Bluetooth or something. And I think the town has often asked for backup data from the tube. I think that's the way it's written, that the town gets the backup data at that point when both sensors go down.
So it's upon request by the town, it's not proactively provided?
Correct.
So there's a question for the speaker or for staff. Did I read somewhere in the report that there was a public website that people could access to see what the numbers were?
Yes, the Census data is downloaded and provided to staff, and that's posted on the Parks and Public Works site. And we have the monthly Census data there.
I think that's a really good idea that could solve a lot of problems, is having access to the information and bolster up the trust issue. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Question, Ms. Badami?
I just have a follow-up question for Ms. Pugha. So that being said, could the metro count data also be accessible to the town and posted online for the residents to view?
I'll refer that to Parks and Public Works to answer.
I think that the town can do anything. I think it's a resource issue in how much time is involved in actually gathering that data and getting it posted. We can certainly work through making sure that the town has access to all of that data and making it available.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to my fellow commissioners to see if they have questions of staff, comments on the application, or wish to introduce a motion for consideration by the commission. Commissioner Badami?
I just have a question for staff, and it's going back to the CUP and what we define as a day or a half day. So apparently, we can modify the CUP. I'm not crazy about that. But how can we add specificity to it so that a day means 24 hours, and a half day, to me, is 12 hours? Is that something that's easy to do?
So again, as I mentioned, and I'll clarify, you don't have the ability to actually modify the conditional use permit. There would be two steps if you wanted to go that route. One would be, you'd have to find that they're in violation of the CUP. And then, two, we would actually have to set a separate hearing under our code, as that Condition 25 says specifically how we go about modifying or revoking a conditional use permit. So there's a whole different hearing process and due process requirements. And I disagree with the person's comment that says they don't have a vested right to increase their students. They do unless we find that they are in violation of their conditional use permit. So that's the first step you do. So if you don't find that, and you find they're in-- they're not in violation of the conditional use permit, you do have the ability to interpret certain clauses within the conditional use permit and provide further guidance. And one of those is, what exactly is a day? There's no definition for a day. So you can interpret that to be 24 hours, or you can interpret that to be 12 hours, and what hours they are. So that's just an interpretation. It's not a modification of the conditional use permit. It's just an interpretation, and you could do that. Just as you could also, for the Census, that requires the Census to be done, if you find that because of the days that it was out, you could require that that Census equipment be recalibrated at a more often time. And that's just an interpretation. You're not changing any of the conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hootis?
As a follow-up to that, and I'm not a fan of changing the CUP in this, but I'm trying to understand the language so that we understand what latitude we do have. So looking at 25 in the CUP, I believe it says, "If at any reviews, the Planning Commission finds that the school is in violation of this conditional use permit, or that new or more effective data collections are available," more effective data collections are available to compute traffic counts, then the conditional use permit may be modified. Okay, or revoked as allowed under town code.
So it spells out the process we'd have to follow and that process is not an annual review. Under the, as I said, under the town code, there's a specific procedure we'd have to file, follow to modify or revoke a conditional use permit.
I see, that's where it would come in, okay.
And I would just also offer, this will be coming back in perpetuity every year. And so you'll have a chance every year to make a determination whether or not they've been in violation. Staff also reviews that data monthly to make sure they're not in violation and there are some interpretations, as Mr. Schultz said, that probably could be done. You know, maybe if you don't want it to be three days in a row, we can have, you know, that separated. If we want to ensure that we have at least one of those days has sports activities, that's probably something we can deal with. So those are probably the things that we can use from an interpretation perspective, but.
So, and to kind of look at that another way is if, in fact, information came out today that the census is not the new way to do this and there's a whole new data collection process that could be done, that would be much more effective, then that would be more of a change in condition because it would be changing all of the wording in the condition. And that's where I would see the new data collection system would require that modification. But just as Joel mentioned, just your interpretation of exactly what the term, a random manual traffic count for three days, you could, you could define that. If you wanted to define what a day is, you can define that. It talks about the census being mechanical readings and if you want to determine how you can make certain those mechanical readings stay within, or attempt to stay within that 5%, you could require when that can be recalibrated. So all you can do, those three at least from what I've heard so far, without having to modify, without having to revoke.
I had another question, if I may. Part of, part of the issue is the discrepancies in the monitoring and also the time lag, the 60-day time lag without a sensor working. Are there ways that the town could be more involved in the monitoring of the data on an ongoing basis? I mean, practical ways that would not use an excessive amount of resource?
I think we defer to the Parks and Public Works director on that because it's really going to be a resource issue on his end.
So I'll bring you back to the time when, when the CUP was crafted and the limitations or the requirements of the CUP were put in place. I think there were multiple layers that were established here. The ultimate goal being to make sure that Hillbrook stayed under their cap of vehicle trips on a daily basis. And behind that were monitoring methods to do those counts. And then sort of the belt and suspender and then belt and suspender on top of that model behind it to ensure that those counts were conducted. So one census counter was out, but one census counter continued to count. So you had, you had even the belt working at the very initial, initial stage and we're collecting census data throughout, throughout the counting. We did miss the ability to do the comparison between the two census data counts so that we didn't have the higher of the two behind it. We do have, and I believe Hillbrook retains and the town can in the future hold on to the host counts as well, but those are additional counts that are happening even above and beyond the census counts. And then as yet another security factor on the counts, you have the random video counts. So again, another, another layer of count on top of that that serves to ensure that the accuracy is there with the ultimate goal of making sure that the, with the worst-case assumptions, that the percentages stay below the, that the counts actually stay below the threshold. And I think that's, that's what the analysis allows for and the forethought in making sure that, that the systems have that backup and that, and that multiple redundancies to capture those counts.
And so with those multiple layers and methods, are you still confident that, that the CUP numbers are not being exceeded?
We're still confident the numbers aren't being exceeded and we're still confident that with the, with the clause in section 19, that Hillbrook is in compliance. And again, even with the forethought that went into the CUP, even, even should they go out of compliance, there is a next phase for that and that's the penalty phase and then the reevaluation phase by the commission. So there's, there's layer upon layer there to ensure that those counts are complied with. I think that in terms of reducing the traffic, Hillbrook has been successful and we're comfortable that they continue to manage below those numbers. That being said, we are interested in working with Hillbrook to ensure that the census data is, hits that 5% mark. We've provided some recommendations, I think in the desk item, on how that, how that could happen. And so we, we support the recalibration on a more frequent basis in order to ensure that census is providing us the best, the best data it possibly can.
Which, which desk item are you referring to?
So that's the desk item, item number two that you received and I think.
That's the one that was on the dais when you arrived and it was also sent via email.
Yeah, I have them all here, I'm just trying to figure out which page. Top of page two of item two?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Hansen.
Just as a general comment, it seems to me that the, that Hillbrook is in compliance, although there is, there are some issues that need to be worked behind the scenes. But in terms of the actual language of the CUP that was approved by town council, it does appear that they were in compliance. My question is this, and I think this for our town attorney, you mentioned some areas where we could make some interpretations. What form would that take in terms of an action by the commission? Because what's on the table before us is to say yes or no, are they in compliance with their CUP, in which case they'll get the increase in enrollment for next year? So how, what form would some tweaks to the interpretation take?
In the form of a motion. The motion could be that you find that they are in compliance of the CUP, they're entitled to the increase in enrollments and, and then go into whatever the interpretations would be, as I mentioned, one of them being from staff recommendation is the interpretation that the census be done and within 5% that the calibration shall occur.
And I think ultimately that could be in the form-
Each direction to staff. Yeah.
Under the heading of "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," or "Try to micromanage it," I'm gonna make a motion and see what happens. I move we recommend approval of this annual review, knowing that there'll be another one next year, and grant the request to increase school enrollment by an additional 33 students for a maximum of 414 for the 2018-2019 school year because the school is in compliance with their CUP. I can make the findings that an environmental impact report had been prepared for the CUP, was certified by PlanCom on October 6, 2014, and that no further environmental analysis required. And the obvious, to find that Hillbrook is in compliance with their CUP. If we want to massage or twink that a little bit, I'll be open to it, but I think that's the essence of it. I think they've got the message. I think there's a great deal at stake for them to get the message and make the corrections and I don't think we need to reinvent the CUP, but that's my motion. Commissioner Hudes?
I'd be willing to second, but I do have three other suggestions, so I'm not sure if I do that after the second or-
I'd be comfortable you do them now, see if I accept them.
Sure.
Go.
Okay. So one would be to urge that Hillbrook School be diligent about ascertaining the operation of the monitoring systems. And to that end, to incorporate the suggestion for calibration on exhibit two, page two, where, paragraph that says census data collection methodology, which has two points there.
Is that one?
That's, that's one item.
Of the three?
Yes.
I agree.
Another would be to urge Hillbrook to follow the updated data collection workflow in exhibit nine from W. Trans. That's listed in exhibit nine, again, to urge them to do that.
That's number two.
Yes.
I agree.
And then, this is not urging, but this is actual, some changes. One would be that in the future, to select three sporadic days and to include a sports day in at least one of those three. And to define the counts in the future on a 24-hour day period.
By sporadic, do you mean non-consecutive?
Non-consecutive.
I agree. Have a second?
Yes, have a second.
Discussion? Commissioner Badami?
With the modifications just elaborated on by Commissioner Hudes, I'd be willing to support the motion.
Other discussion? Commissioner Hansen?
As I said a few minutes ago, I'm, I'm impressed at what Hillbrook has done to lower the traffic counts with the increase in enrollment and I think their transportation demand management program is great. I'm, I'm happy that we're making a few recommendations in addition to approving the CUP as suggested by Commissioner Hudes, though, that to tweak the discrepancies that we've seen and the performance issue that happened with the census data. So, and then, and then of course managing or doing the tracking on the manual basis on different days instead of the three consecutive days. I think all that makes sense, so I will be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Genov.
Yeah, and I'd just like to thank the public for bringing forward the concerns that they have because it helps us to refine the days that we are recommending be counted. And if you have continuing concerns over which days are reported on, it would be very helpful for you to continue to bring those forward. I think that the school has done a remarkable job of bringing their traffic count down and that's a benefit to the neighborhood, but if there are certain periods where you still have concerns, those particular periods should be looked at, so keep bringing that data forward.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on this matter?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you very much. On that note, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. On that note, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
That even though it's evolving, but finding out what's happening in adjacent communities.
Yeah, and we'll provide you the ordinances, the updated ordinances for those jurisdictions in the surrounding area that have made updates so far.
Okay, thank you.
The big issue for it is to make sure we're in compliance with state law and the requirements of it, and as was said, so 1069 was the bill that requires this, and its main reason is, again, to take away some of our local control on when we can approve these and make them ministerial. And as Joel just pointed out, 1069 has already, it's only been in effect for a year. So sometimes I do kind of like to wait and see what happens because there's usually always a trailer bill for new law, and certainly there is, and that's the 229 which we'll look at. And that had to do with, after it's already been passed, what a lot of towns and cities have done is said, okay, we'll make this ministerial, but guess what? You're going to need an extra sewer, water connections, and all of the other fees. And so the bill that I'm just reading says, you know, you're not allowed to charge any other new water or sewer connection fees for this because some cities had been charging up to $75,000 for the secondary dwelling unit to find another way to deny it. So the state continually tries to erode at our local control, but we certainly can bring back, and we've been looking at all the other jurisdictions on how they can interpret these. And I, you know, we'll look at 229 to make certain. It made more definitions on the tandem parking requirement I'm reading right now, so it's brand-new. Amendments were just made, and we'll see what we need to do. But I think the main reason is to get the outreach and see what the community is, and maybe we need to even do more outreach before we make a decision because it certainly can affect property rights.
Other questions for staff. Commissioner Genov.
Yeah, I had a question regarding existing accessory dwelling units that the town mayor may not be aware of. How does, how did the changes to the ordinance, either retroactively or grandfather, or what impact goes to those units?
So there are, there was a provision in the eighties that you might have seen in the ordinance for grandfathering in, if you will, older units prior to, basically that ended in 1987. So these units before 1983 and then up to 1987 could be legalized, and several of them were, and we have those, we have those on the books. After that point, the ordinance says, any application at that point is seen as a new accessory dwelling unit application. So, go ahead, Mr. Paulson has something to add.
But if it's an existing structure, this new state law requires us to approve it. So they, we will look at it from a health and safety perspective, but the new state law looks at existing structures and said, you must approve it.
Follow-up. How do you find out about these structures if the homeowner isn't forthcoming and coming to the town to disclose them? And if there's a deed restriction that can be viewed as a penalty, then would you anticipate people coming forward to have these ADUs newly reviewed and approved?
Yes, so we do anticipate that, and not all of the ADUs are going to require deed restrictions. Those are in specific instances, and if you are interested in complying with the deed restriction, so do we make sure it is a truly affordable unit, then we will, for instance, cover your fees of what would otherwise have been charged for the second unit. And so that's a benefit if you are interested in doing that. We have the strategy of an enhanced below-market price from a secondary dwelling unit, which is what we used to call them, perspective. And so we have even the other tools with the lots that are 10,000 square feet or less or more, but are non-conforming, or hillside currently, five acres or more, as opportunities for those additional units. We anticipate some will come in. It really is going to be a case-by-case basis, and we're really reactive. We have a very involved community. People contact our code compliance officer on a regular basis and let him know about structures that may have people habitating, that may not be approved.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff. Commissioner Hanson.
I just had one more question because I do wanted to hear the public testimony. Back when we worked on the housing element, a few of us sat on the housing element board that were on the general plan committee, we identified second dwelling units as a main, is one of the, it wasn't a big number in terms of our total RIN, but it was an important source of affordable housing. I was just curious as to, there was a comment made in the letter about how San Jose was worried about putting a limit on it, and because they thought they'd get too many, and they didn't get that many. So I was curious as to what our production has been like, you know, since our housing element, it's been two years, if you knew that.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but we can get that data for you when we come back.
Okay, because I think, you know, that's
It's not a large number.
It was, I think, if I recall, the total number was like 28 or something. And so I don't, I would imagine this law would help that along, but it's, you know, we'd have to understand the particulars, so.
True.
Commissioner Hudes.
Just a question for the chair. After we take public testimony, will we have the opportunity to ask questions of staff again?
Yes.
Because I have some sort of tech, more technical ones, I don't want to hold up public testimony for that. I do have one bigger-picture question, though.
To answer your question is yes.
Thank you.
Because we're going to be dealing with their questions, and we may need to seek clarification.
Okay, so I do have one sort of bigger-picture question, and that's about the number of units. So it seems we're doing a mass word change from second or secondary to accessory. And in my mind, you have primary and you have second. And that allows only one because the next one is third, right? And in the state law of accessory, you could have multiple accessories. So, and I'm trying to understand, Section 2910-305, as it's currently written, are we there replacing accessory, I'm sorry, second or secondary with accessory in that document? Is that where we see accessory? Is that replacing secondary?
Yeah, per state law, we would replace it throughout the document.
Okay. So my question is, from a state law perspective and from the town's perspective historically, how many additional units are we allowing to a primary residence?
So per the code, per our code, it would be only one per lot or per
And for past practice, when we went through the period where we legalized a bunch of them, you could have up to two. So with the new units, you can only have one, and so we'll look in the language to see if that's clear, because apparently it's not.
Right, I'm looking at 2910-315, which says, under existing lawful, there it says a maximum of two are allowed, but other places it's just not clear. It uses, and I think that it's a little bit ambiguous when we use the term accessory in that it could be more than one accessory if we don't specify otherwise.
Other questions for staff? I have one. It's a lot to digest, and it's a lot to project what the consequences of some of the language is. But yet, we have a specific question from a citizen who says, "We have a two-car detached, two-car garage on an alley with sideline setbacks. Staff has determined that a local story, that a second-story residential addition to a secondary structure did not comply with local zoning codes for privacy reasons, notwithstanding that two of my three adjacent neighbors have them," which can be very frustrating. So my question is, if we understand this gentleman's letter, would the language we're dealing with now alleviate this concern and allow him a second story on that unit?
It would not.
Notwithstanding that seemingly maybe other people have them.
So again, that gets back to the grandfathering. When there was the amnesty period, there was a number of multi-story accessory structures, and during that time period, the town decided to allow those units.
That was back in the eighties.
That was in the eighties. We currently only allow accessory structures to be one-story. I'm sure it's fairly clear from an impact perspective for privacy what that can look like, since we allow accessory structures to be as close as three feet from a property line.
All right, thank you. Other questions for staff? Seeing none. In this instance, the town is the applicant, and we've more or less just heard the applicant's presentation, for which reason I'm going to open the public portion of the public hearing. So we invite comments from members of the public. If you've not already turned in a speaker card, please do so to the staff on my right. When you are called to speak, remember that you have three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and speak directly into the microphone. You will have three minutes total. The yellow warning light comes on, it doesn't mean you're done, it means you have 30 seconds. When the red light comes on, it means you're done. Our first speaker will be Ms. Kathy Weiner.
I live on Massal, and I have a legal secondary accessory building. And my question is, you know, I actually got it legal in January of 2017 because I've been following the law, and I was short a parking place, so that helped me. But in really understanding the law and really reading it and this new law, I just feel like in the spirit of the law, since you're, I'm allowed to give comments now, if you could consider allowing somebody with a detached secondary accessory dwelling, I guess it's called now, to also be able to use part of their home as an additional accessory dwelling? Because it still meets far, it still meets setbacks, it's the spirit of the California law, and the parking requirements would have to be met for each unit. And there could be, I think in that law, there were junior-sized units, so it just seems like if you want your mother-in-law to come live with you, and she needs a little kitchenette, you can't even do that now, because I, you know, somebody in my position, which would be a lot of people in town. So anyway, that was my comment, since
I want to understand what you said. Did you say you already have a secondary unit?
Detached, yes. I'm not looking to build one now, but a neighbor was, and I was thinking about it, and I just thought, you know, you're only allowed one accessory dwelling. And if even if it's in your main house, it's still considered accessory dwelling if you want to put a kitchenette in, you know, in a separate, like have a separate room with a separate entrance, even though you're not changing anything of the outside of your house, you're not going to, you know.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Badami.
This is probably more for staff. Wouldn't that constitute being a duplex? It's no longer a single-family dwelling? No?
No. So you can convert existing space? I think what Ms. Weiner was asking about is, if you already have an existing detached, shouldn't you allow the homeowner to have one in their existing structure? And so it would be more than one, which was a question earlier, and that's certainly, if the commission believes that's appropriate, that's something we look at. In addition, I think she was mentioning the junior accessory dwelling units. That's an optional component, and we didn't bring that forward, but we'll, we can definitely bring additional information to you on that at the next hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Swenberg and Milai.
This is my mother-in-law, May Lee Swenberg. We live at 128 Mary Way on the eastern side of Los Catos. I bought my home in 2004. It came with a brand-new, what they called habitable poolhouse, fully permitted, permitted for habitation, has a certificate of occupancy, even has fire sprinklers in it. Has a beautiful space for a kitchen, but it does not have a kitchen installed because of the town's requirements. My mother-in-law had to come live with us, and, well, we extended her the opportunity to come live with us when she lost her home due to some financial stuff in, about 2011. And it's been wonderful having her, but she cannot be made as comfortable as possible in this beautiful, pretty big home. It's just under 900 square feet, because we can't put a kitchen in. She has to wash her pots in the bathroom sink and stuff when she wants to, you know, use her microwave. And it just, it just seems, this all seemed very weird to me. I mean, I didn't understand the spirit of the law, or the codes, to begin with. I didn't understand why you would want to prevent citizens from using structures in this way, in this manner, you know, when they are built to code and done properly and legally with permits. It doesn't make any sense to me. We have a large lot, it's a 13,000-square-foot lot, but it is narrow because it was originally two parcels back-to-back, and so there was not a possibility of including other parking not in the setback. There are really, you know, just minimal side yards. And that was the only thing preventing putting a kitchen into this home. And so I really beseech you to look at the spirit of the law that was passed and try to abide by that spirit, take down any obstacles, and help us to get the best use of our properties in the town. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? I have one. Are you saying the reason you couldn't get a kitchenette was because of the parking requirements?
Yes, that's what we were told. And in fact, staff verbally told me, oh yeah, don't you know, there is, probably there was a deed restriction required on your property when they got these permits? But I have to tell you, when we bought the home and the title search was done, there was no, this was never brought up, and I just went back and looked in the title search documents tonight, and I couldn't find anything about a deed restriction related to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, she'd love to have it. Thank you.
Okay. Question for staff. The language we have before us, is it here, or does it have the potential to provide a parking provision such that a kitchenette would be allowed?
Yeah, we would say, I would say yes, because, you know, we would, yeah, absent application, we wouldn't ever definitively probably answer that. But it's a ministerial application, and if it's, again, ADU proposed within existing floor area, that's really the language of the state, so that's one of the exceptions to parking that's already in the law.
So is that language before us, or do we have the option to add it?
That's before you, and that's required by state law.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Kretschmer?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Kretschmer, AIA. I am a local resident at, on Old Blossom Hill Road. I'm also a local architect. So as an architect and a resident, I'm really in support of making these restrictions, these current regulations, less intrusive to homeowners. For one, one big reason, we've seen that we have an affordable housing issue here in the town of Los Catos and in compliance with state law. And one of the things that we have done is to put high-density, affordable housing in kind of one location in town for the most part. That creates a kind of a separate and not equal kind of location where people with, you know, having to live in affordable housing are not part and integrated into the community. So I feel that ADUs would help in integrating the general populace, and people with low incomes would also help in providing more, you know, residents these affordable homes. I went through the planning staff report, and I had a few recommendations that were in my letter. Most of them were just answering the questions that were in the staff report. The things that I really want to bring up in my time here is that I really do believe that, that second-story attached or detached ADU should be allowed, so long as the main house is maybe a two-story, or that it goes, still goes through any other planning hearing, and giving you, the planning commission, the opportunity to reject any inappropriate applications. One of the reasons is that, that would be in compliance with neighboring municipalities. For example, Santa Clara County is allowing detached accessory dwelling units as a second-story on detached garages, as well as over a garage if it's attached to the house. Most importantly, though, I think that we need to look at the exemptions to the FAR. One of the things is aligning with other local municipalities, because we have very low FARs here in the town of Los Catos, and maybe giving some sort of advantage just for the purpose of ADUs, where we come in alignment with other municipalities of something like a .45 FAR. And still, it has to comply to other regulations, such as the max lot coverage. The other thing, too, is I feel it's important that we give homeowners the ability to have flexibility with their properties. We know that it's very, it's expensive to live in Los Catos, as well as, so we have financial and cultural reasons why ADUs would be a good thing to have. And I have clients who are making the decision to build an ADU and move into that ADU, and then rent out the main house so that they can afford.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, I had two questions, and thank you for the letter. You've, and I raised the question before about other municipalities, and you've said that I believe that other municipalities are using a .45 FAR. Could you, could you provide some examples of which
San Jose, San Jose specifically is a .45 FAR. Other municipalities have a maximum on the square footage. For example, Redwood City is 800 square feet. County, I believe, is 1,100 square feet. So we could either do a maximum square footage for the ADUs, or we could do the floor area ratio. My personal belief is that floor area ratio, increasing that would be the best way to create something that is more in the similar size as the main home, rather than just giving a flat floor area.
Yeah, but San Jose is quite large, and in some ways not all that similar to Los Catos.
Correct.
What about Campbell, Saratoga, Los Altos, Cupertino, Mountain View? Do you have information on some of those communities?
Mostly I've been concentrating on Santa Clara County because I do homes within the town of Los Catos that are actually county, and so county has specific floor area.
Well, there are quite a few differences in zoning and building requirements in county versus
Correct. But they also reduced, for example, previous, before the regulation change, they reduced the lot size minimums for ADUs in order to come more in compliance with state laws. So now you can have a much smaller lot size in county and still be able to have an ADU.
Okay. I have another question, but I'll wait to see if there's others.
All right. Commissioner Genov.
Yeah, excuse me, a question about your point number six regarding property owners given the flexibility to live either in the main house or the ADU as their primary residence. I believe the language in the revised ordinance provides for that.
Yeah, as we're trying to pass it, yes.
Right. However, I just wanted to clarify your next statement, which is property owners should be allowed to rent both units. Do you mean either unit, or just not being present and renting both?
Not being present. Now, there is something in the state law that says that if, for example, if someone gets a job relocation, and they don't even know how long it's going to be, they should be allowed to rent both the home and the main house and the ADU when they're, you know, on this job relocation. But that seemed very vague.
Okay, just wanted to clarify if you meant both or either.
Commissioner Hanson.
I was just curious, since you had a lot of experience building these units, what the typical practice is? There is a substitution in the law about it, but what the typical practice that you've seen about, about the utility connections and whatnot? Because I see one kind of level where you have the ADU inside the house, and then there's another level where it's attached to the house, another one maybe where it's above the garage, another one where it's completely detached. And, you know, if you're running that unit to someone that's not your family, you know, then they might, like, leave the water running for three days and, you know. So I'm just curious how does that, how have you seen that work in practice without regard to this new law?
For the most part, what we've done is water and sewer usually are still part of the main home, and electricity is put on its own, own service, so that it's calculated. And of course, telephone would be on its own as well if it's still, they'd still have a landline. But for the most part, water and sewer still remains as part of one bill for the property.
And do the landlords pass those charges along, or they absorb them?
Most of my clients are actually building the homes for family members.
So it's not an issue.
So, but the ones that I do know have rented, they've just split it up. They've just taken the floor area into account and then split the bill accordingly, and included it's part of their rent.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudes.
I was wondering if you had an opinion about the number of ADUs, and, you know, in moving from the terminology second to accessory, are we saying, in the way it's been drafted, that multiple ADUs should be permitted? And if that's the case, then are there any limits? And is it, you know, one per 10,000 square feet? Is it some other, other way of, of sort of, you know, managing the number of accessory units?
Okay, that was a long question, so let me try to break that down. Actually, could you repeat your first part of that question?
Do you have an opinion about whether it should be one or multiple ADUs permitted in addition to a primary?
I don't particularly have an opinion as to one or two, but what I would say is it makes sense as to floor area and lot coverage. If you can provide smaller units for family members, and you don't exceed more than two, then it doesn't seem that it should be denied. But if you're trying to go with something like the full maximum, if we're allowing that, a full 1,200-square-feet detached ADU with two bedrooms, and then try to do an attached unit, that does seem, for our town, maybe a little bit excessive.
And do you have any information on other municipalities in terms of number of ADUs?
Most municipalities state one ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I want, there was another part to your question that I didn't answer, and it did have to do with the town of Los Catos changing the definition. May I answer that? As you may remember, this is a little bit confusing, because in the past, we've had two words, one, an accessory unit, which could be a poolhouse, cabana, hobby shop, studio, that does not have a full kitchen, can have two or more plumbing fixtures based on the approval of the staff or community development director. And we used to call that accessory units. And then we have the second dwelling unit, which is what we are now going to be calling accessory dwelling units. So I think one thing is, we need to also address what we're going to do with that previous nomenclature of accessory unit, because that's not the same as what we've been calling second dwelling unit.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Commissioner Hanson.
I just had one more question.
Yes.
It was on your comment number six. Property owners should be allowed to rent both units, so long as doing so does not violate any other law or regulations. So what use model do you see? So you're saying the owner of the property wouldn't live there, and they would rent out both units to who? I mean, to anyone?
To anyone. I don't, I don't see any problem with that. You know, we have people all over town who own houses and rent them out. So why should that be a restriction as well, just because you have a ADU? As long as they're not violating other regulations, it seems reasonable to me to allow it to be a rental property. And as long as they're not a nuisance to the neighbors. Of course, neighbors can always complain if anything's a nuisance.
Well, they could put that in the lease.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Angelina Donner. Angelina Donner.
Hello, Angelia Donner, proud resident of the Almond Grove still. I want to first thank Joel for getting the verbatim minutes of the GPC and the PC minutes having to do with the specific plan put online. It's going to be very helpful to have a little bit of a head start. As it relates to this, I really have questions more than, and opinions more than specific changes to what is being provided here. First off, I'd like to have a confirmation of what is conforming versus non-conforming when you're talking about residential properties. If you have a residential property regardless of zone and the housing that you have and the existing structures that you have have all gone through approval, et cetera, doesn't it conform? Because I'm, I'm confused a little bit about this 10,000 square foot lot, non-conforming. Why aren't we, hopefully there's no restriction on conforming. Anyway, I'd like to have a confirmation on that. I really don't see how we can require 80% AMI on the rental amount if it is going to be used for a rental amount. I went through Senate Bill 1069. The only kind of limitations that I see even relating to the housing element is a requirement where the town provides actually committed assistance to people who are providing the lower income housing. And I don't think that's being done here. I don't know where the money would come from. So I really don't understand the, that, that provision or where it came from, why we think that's allowed. The definition of household, member of household, let's go back to talk about what a household was according to the North Forty and make sure that we use the same definition of household. It could be anybody is my understanding. The FAR limitation, again, if you're using existing, if you go to page six of the staff report, it discusses floor area ratio, but then it says conversion of existing space shall be permitted. We all learned the word shall means must. So if you're just converting an existing garage and you're not doing anything else, then I don't see why the floor area ratio should come into, into effect here. The other small thing is, let me get to it. On page three of the staff report, it talks about a garage being demolished in conjunction with construction of an accessory dwelling unit. Most people would convert their garage, not demolish it and build a brand new accessory unit. So I think that there needs to be some clarification on that as well. And some scenarios of existing lots and conditions in town would be extremely helpful to the public.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Marie Rector?
Hello, I'm a 43-year resident of Los Gatos. I live at 236 Harding Avenue and we've purchased our home in 1986 and it was an existing 3,200 square foot house with a garage as part of the house. At that time, we took out permits and built a shop for my husband and our son who did racing. It would met all the criteria of the town's rules. And so that shop is now available. At this point in our lives, we would like to convert it to an ADU and use that as a second income so that I can someday maybe retire. And we have already gone through the process of getting it all drawn up by a professional designer using all the criteria laid out by Jerry Brown. We were very excited about this, you know, this possibility of using this existing freestanding shop. So at this point, we're just, it's in, it's been submitted, it meets all the criteria that were drawn up. And we just want to take this open space, it's an open two, two-car garage and add a bathroom and a kitchenette. And it's all been turned into planning and we're just, we're ready to go. I have a contractor who's very frustrated because he keeps trying to figure out how he can get the timing done. I mean, he's waiting for us to proceed. And as far as we know, everything is completely legitimate with our plan and so that's why I'm here.
What, what then specifically is holding you up?
The town.
Is there an obstacle or they're just-
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So they're back, they're backlog with work? That's what we're-
Well, we just, I've been told that, that you have not proceeded to adopt the rules that Jerry Brown laid out in the ADU. And so therefore we can't get, we're waiting to pull our permits.
So something in there somewhere is an obstacle that we haven't smoothed out yet.
Their obstacle is the planning department hasn't been able to come through with, with permitting us to go forward.
All right. Commissioner Hudes?
Have you been told that you're waiting for a new ordinance?
No, we have not. We've been told nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff Lockridge, 109 Paseo Laura. Tonight I'm talking, speaking as a recovering affordable housing element advisory board member. It's well-known that there's a housing shortage in California as well as Silicon Valley. Los Gatos has its own portion of that shortage in the form of our required 619 Rena housing units specified during the current housing element. Secondary housing or accessory dwelling units, ADUs, are a different form of housing that can help Los Gatos meet our housing needs. The preliminary suggested lot size required is 10,000 square feet or larger non-conforming lots. Many more Los Gatos residents have lot sizes closer to 8,000 square feet. So requiring large minimum lot sizes and not allowing smaller lot sizes for ADUs can severely restrict their potential development. Santa Cruz, for example, confronted their housing shortage by promoting ADUs as a critical infill housing opportunity. The city set the minimum lot size at 4,500 square feet. As long as the ADUs meet, for example, the minimum, the maximum square footage, FAR, setbacks and maximum lot coverage, a smaller lot size like 7,000 to 8,000 square feet or even smaller could be appropriate. ADUs are a powerful type of housing unit because they allow for different uses and serve different populations ranging from students and young professionals to young families, people with disabilities and senior citizens. By design, ADUs are more affordable, are more affordable. Los Gatos can encourage the development of ADUs and improve access to jobs, education and services for many. A UC Berkeley study noted that one affordable, one unit of affordable housing in the Bay Area costs about $500,000 to develop, whereas an ADU can range anywhere up to $200,000 on the expensive end in high housing cost areas. ADUs give homeowners the flexibility to share independent living areas with family members and others, allowing seniors to age in place as they require more care and helping extended families to be near one another while maintaining privacy. I was disappointed when the moved down portion of the North Forty Plan was eliminated. I understood this to be at least one of Los Gatos' unmet needs. I would urge the planning commission to consider a smaller minimum lot size like 7,000 to 8,000 square feet for ADUs and I support secondary units placed on second stories. I'd like to see us be flexible at this stage and create rules that cannot be reinterpreted later. We should encourage and facilitate this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you, and I remember some of those housing element discussions and affordable housing discussions fondly. With regard to the proposal, you suggested 7,000 to 8,000, I think is where you came down. Is that correct?
That's right.
And do you think that there should be a sort of a sliding scale on the size of the ADU structure because there's a proposal to make that 1,200 square feet? Do you think that that number should apply regardless of the lot size?
Well, I agree with a modified sliding schedule, but I think that we should, the town should have rules and regulations that when they're in place, they can't be reinterpreted. So we don't make exceptions to all of our rules. So once we set them up, so for a smaller lot size, it would require a maximum smaller unit. So whatever that might be, it might be a 600, 900, 1,200, whatever those, that range is, but, but set it to a range of square footage.
So perhaps through some formula relating to the lot size?
As long as it, and I'm suggesting as long as it isn't interpretable as, you know, two people have two different interpretations of it.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Badami?
So along with that formula, you had indicated that you are in favor of second-story accessory dwelling units. But on these smaller lots, let's say that you have a one-story home, are you saying encourage a second-story accessory dwelling unit? Or maybe there should be a formula that if it's already a one-story for the main dwelling, that the accessory dwelling unit should also be a one-story?
I'm not confused with the accessory dwelling unit versus the secondary dwelling unit. So I'm not thinking that there's more than one accessory unit. So either you put it on the second story if you, I mean, I, I would suggest that we could even allow people to add a second story as the, the accessory unit. But, so I don't know what, other than that, what your question is. If you can include it in the second story, that is, that's possible too, but that would have to be an existing second story.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I do remember fondly our discussions on the housing element. I, I was just curious, since you, you know, looked through the document, you, you did flag a couple of things that you thought needed to be different than what was written. Did you see anything else in the proposal that caught your attention that, that maybe that was too restrictive or not restrictive enough or, you know, that would, that would make things-
Most of it has to do with the flexibility in, in crafting a, a rule or a regulation, an ordinance that we can stick to and we don't waste time in any of our town processes so that when, when an applicant comes in, it's clear what the guidelines are. We don't have any, a bunch of questions that can't be answered and that it doesn't come back as a denied or an appeal process. It just seems that we do that a lot right now and I was, I would like to see our shalls be put in there and not, not a maybe or not a, not a should. So I, I would like to see it be really firm on whatever you decide after discussing. And what my plan was to go through the document word for word because you have to compare it against the new legislation that just come out. And so it was really complicated and it was like too much to read in a couple of days. So I, I intend on, on putting forth some emails to, about this because from what I understand, this is the first, the first conversation about it and it'll be then represented to you at a later date.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Justin? Justin Dray?
Good evening. Thanks to the commission for having me, us. It's Justin Dray.
Dray.
I live on Royal Grande in Los Gatos and first of all, thank you Ms. Zarnowitz for including me on your, on your mailing circular so I knew to be here tonight. My wife and I are going to be living in the hills in an HR five zone in the near future. And of particular interest to us is the impact that these potential revisions would have and how HR guidelines would play into it. So I hope to submit some meaningful emails to you with my specific opinions on that, but I wanted to find out whether the commission or Ms. Zarnowitz had any thoughts on where things are headed in that regard. Is, is a four-acre hillside property with sufficient flat land to build on going to be prohibited from building an ADU or do you have to have five plus? Those are the kinds of considerations I'm currently interested in. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lee Quintana?
I have not extensively read the new laws, so I may make some errors here. But mainly, I, I would like some clarification of several things and would suggest that when this comes back to the planning commission, that the staff report does a good job of explaining all the various things so that the public understands. And I would start with expanding the permitted zone. I would, I would be much in favor of that. But I am somewhat confused whether I've understood it correctly or not. It says all R1 properties on conforming lots and non-conforming lots with more than 10,000 square feet. So I understand that to mean that in the R1 zone, most, most of the properties are 8,000 square foot minimum. So, and then in the, in the 10,000 applies to anything over the, the eight, any other R1 zone. But is an R1D an R1 zone? Is an RM an R1? It's not an R1 zone. So what actually is permitted there? I think I understood finally that in the R1D and the RM zone, if you have an existing primary unit, you can add an ADU. But that wasn't clear in the staff report. The process isn't clear to me. It seems like there are things in the staff report and in the ordinance that suggests that there are discretionary points and, but they're also indications that the, the laws now require mandatory or ministerial approvals which doesn't allow for discretion. So are we only able to do those things that are objective and subjective doesn't apply? Then how do we do, how do we apply architectural standards which are always subjective? Parking, I think one spot per bedroom or none, but minimum of one spot and all the exceptions that were listed. Tandem parking, we have it all over town, even if it's not in a PD, single-family homes have tandem. And parking in the front setback on an existing garage driveway that's done all the time with existing homes, even tandem parking on existing driveway pads in addition to garages are done. I would suggest on, oh God, I have so many more things that need to be explained.
We are going to continue this matter to a date certain and if you had time, put them into a letter that we get before the night of the hearing. And no, I'd appreciate knowing the rest of your thoughts. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Badami?
Ms. Quintana, can you provide us with your thoughts on a FAR formula or just a strict limitation of 1,200 square feet?
I'm still thinking about that, but I do believe that, I, I agree with Jeff that maybe we should look at allowing these ADUs on smaller lots than 8,000 square feet. And in that case, I certainly think there should be some relationship between size and of the permitted structure and the size of the lot. I also think that corollary to that in a sense is whether you can allow second floor on detached garages or as independent units because my thought is that 15 feet is the maximum that you can now have. But that could be 15 feet straight across or it could be maybe 18 feet with an average of 12 that would allow you to have enough of a second story to allow a bedroom alcove or a sleeping loft. And if that peak of the ridge was parallel to the side yards- to the side yards, that would alleviate the question of privacy, because your windows would be front and back. So, there are all kinds of things that I, I don't think have been adequately covered or explained. In particular, hillsides are so different than the flatlands that I keep going back and forth and thinking there need to be separate things for the hillside, and again, more of an explanation of what is required to have a deed restriction and what isn't, I really don't understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hansen.
So, I wanted to go back to the hillsides. I, I know it needs more thought, but when, when we were on the housing, when we were discussing the housing element, the, the general thinking was keep, the, the properties had to be more than five acres, and I think that's what's proposed at the moment. What are, you know, without having done a thorough study of it, I mean, what, what were your general thoughts about allowing it on smaller acre properties? I mean, it, it seems like, you know, I, I don't know what the, where the magic number of five comes from, if you have a three-acre lot, and the lot's appropriate from a slope or whatever perspective and FAR. What, what are your thoughts about going lower than that?
I think there are situations where definitely you could go lower. That's part of my problem with thinking about the hillsides, because no two hillside lots are the same, all the slopes are different, the amount of the area within the LRDA is different, and, you know, all of those somehow should be factored into what would be allowed, because five acres is a lot of land, but if it's like this, you're going to have problems with, well, is it a cellar, or is it a basement, or is it a storey? It's, you know, back to that little loop. But if it's flat, why, why couldn't you? But the other question I had was on site coverage, it's, the ordinance, proposed ordinance says 15% of the backyard excluding this, I forget how it says, the setbacks, or 40% or 50% of the, of the entire lot. Gee, could we have a diagram of that, because I don't really understand it? And is that to be applied to RM lots, and R1D lots, and hillside lots, or, you know, I just make sure there's no inconsistencies?
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much. My last card is for Mr. Thomas Pratt. If anyone else would like to speak, they would need to turn in a card now.
My name's Thomas Pratt. I live on Cypress Way in Los Catos. I, my family and I have been considering the best use of some auxiliary space that was, had to be part of our, the way our house was built. It is a hillside property, and we moved in there eight or nine years ago. I was really happy to see the topic posted on the next door application. I, I'm not on the county, the city's distribution, so when I saw it there, I was pretty happy, because I said, oh, cool, this is a topic I'm interested in, and I read through the bulk of the documents that were linked there, and I think I understand the gist of them. So, in general, I'm supportive of the amendment to the chapter 29 and all that. Moreover, I'm very pleased, of course, to, to hear that it may consider the auxiliary, accessory dwelling units on hillside lots. I'm curious as to what factors might or are expected to apply to granting approval for lots that are less than five acres, and I heard the previous speakers, including the one just before me, saying how every lot is different, and, and so on. I'm also curious as to what restrictions may be there regarding affordability. I know the nature of the whole thing is with respect to affordability from the statewide standpoint, but it would seem to me that certain market factors would also apply, given, you know, the, the location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir. I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing, and ask if commissioners have questions of staff. Let me say first that as I see it, the task before us is to begin a review of the proposed draft to the town code. These amendments regarding ADUs, and to discuss topics outlined in staff's report, including their questions. Following that, we need a motion to continue the item to a date certain, so that staff can work on our comments and, and get back to us with further detail. So, who would like to begin? Commissioner Hansen?
I probably have more than one question, but I'll just start with this one that caught my attention. On the, on the 658-52-2, I'm looking at the proposed language change. It's exhibit three on the first page, and this gets to the question that was asked earlier about, like, how, how do you decide how big it can be? It's, right now, the, the proposed language says the increased floor of the attached accessory dwelling unit shall exceed, not exceed 50% of the existing living area with a maximum increase in floor area of 1,200 square feet. And then the next point is the total area of floor space for an attached, detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 1,200 square feet. So, there's the question of whether this should be FAR or the square footage, but then, you know, just like a more immediate question is if you, if you have a detached accessory dwelling unit, and you have a house that's 1,000 square feet, and you let them, you would let them build a house accessory unit that was 1,200 square feet? I mean, that, did I read that right?
So, yeah, and what you're reading are the state laws. That's what the state has passed.
So, that's, they, that, that's what they would recommend?
They would allow that. It, it says kind of earlier on that, you know, the jurisdictions can set certain criteria that would be applicable to these ministerial permits, and those include the development regulations that you're looking at, and that, that jurisdictions may put size limits on the units, and so that is essentially up to, you know, the jurisdiction if they want to do that.
So, it isn't within our discretion, I mean, although they're recommending to let, to let units be up to 1,200 square feet, you know, we can have in our, we can have in our rules that, you know, if the houses, they can't be bigger than the primary house?
You can, and actually, the SB 229, actually, that's one of the cleanups, because right now, the language only talks about existing, or attached, and so they broadened it to new, attached, detached, it's 50% or 1,200, whichever is greater.
Yeah, because I, I, so they, they obviously thought that wasn't clear as well, and that's why they're fixing it in 229, you know, because it, it does need to relate to whatever the property is now, and what the dwelling unit is in place now. Yeah, but it would include lot coverage, so that 50, the FAR would affect that as well, right? So.
And I'll just say, you, you heard a lot of good comments this evening, and so there are a number of items that are, we generally have discretion around, and so it's really deciding where you all individually, and then ultimately collectively think we should be going in relation to some of these questions, many of which were brought up multiple times this evening. So, that is going to be helpful information for staff to walk through some of those things. Again, and, you know, whether it's existing or proposed, there are a number of ways, whether it's a hillside lot, or an R1 lot, or an R1D, or an RM, there are variables across the board. We are not going to draft a perfect ordinance that's going to work in every single instance. I can guarantee, that's the one thing I can guarantee we're going to do, or not going to do. And so, what we want to do is look at parameters, whether that's, you know, in here, we have, whether that's increasing FAR is one person brought up, or looking at some other options to provide that flexibility. The flip side is, the challenges that that brings, or will bring for some folks in certain neighborhoods, and the typical challenges it brings are privacy impacts, parking impacts. The ones that aren't deed restricted will still be $2,500 each month to rent, so they're not really going to be affordable. So, those are the types of the other side of the coin, but given the state law, we still need to go through this exercise and modify our ordinance to be as flexible as we think is reasonable, and, and within the parameters of those laws.
Just one more question on the, on the intent of the state law. So, I, I, this seemed a lot like, to me, like the, the general housing affordability, the whole arena thing, where, where things are zoned for 20 dwelling units per acre. This seems very similar, that they're just putting this arbitrary square footage number, and saying, well, if it's small enough, then it probably will be affordable enough.
And so, it's the practical affordability you guys hear about all the time with smaller, even if it's a house, right? So, the smaller units are practically affordable, whether it's a condo or a townhouse, because they're just smaller in square footage. They're not going to be affordable in a truly affordable housing form of affordability. There's, that's clear, but they're cheaper than a standard, single-family home, even in R18 zone here in town. So, that's the opportunity they're looking to provide, and so it's going to also, important to take into account, you know, you have other folks who've talked about, and many people use these for family members, right? So, you know, it's not that these are all income generating, or as you look towards the next phase, it does become an income opportunity, and that's a great opportunity for those folks. So, it's, there's a whole lot of challenges and opportunities when it revolves around this, so that's really important for you guys to take all of that into consideration as you're moving through this.
All right. Thanks.
A couple of points before I forget them, because a lot of good comments have been made. As I go over the text of the proposals, they're a little put-offish, like clearly they are in legalese. These are laws coming to us from the state, to the degree possible, more, that the resultant document, to the extent possible, be more like the hillside standards and guidelines, more like the residential design guidelines, with examples, and pictures, and colors, and...
No. So, the hillside guidelines and residential design guidelines are just that. The code is the law. So, that's why we don't have examples and pictures in there, and there's, you know, the legalese, so that's not something that we would be looking to do in a zoning code.
Well, that's a suggestion that one of us is making. Also, the, also the comments on directive and specific, that would really be helpful to us in the future. We get hammered by vagaries and, and opinions, and it, no, to the extent possible, make them definitive, so that we can defend them. Commissioner Badami?
We have a series of questions that staff was so kind to put together in the staff report for us to consider. So, the first one having to do with parking, I just want some clarification so that I understand our parameters, but it says, should parking requirements for accessory dwelling units be reduced to one space per accessory dwelling unit, or eliminated? Does that mean just a limit, we have the discretion or the parameter to say eliminate it altogether, so therefore, we don't even have to worry about allowing parking in the front setback areas or tandem spaces as a requirement? Just no parking requirements, period?
That's correct. The state law appears to allow you to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Genoff, you had your hand up?
Yeah, it's sort of a process question. The, the code sections that are, with the track changes, I assume, have been provided to us as, this is what the law tells us we need to have as part of our code, but the previous set of questions in the staff report are the discretionary areas that you want us to discuss tonight. So, to focus on the questions, excuse me, as opposed to picking through the section 29, is that where, where you want us to be? That would be great. Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you focus on the nine questions, those are the ones where we really do want to get some input. There are placeholders in there on these questions, so there is language in the ordinance revisions that we provided, however, those are things that we think can be modified, and so we're looking for your input on that.
Well, the path and an agenda is always very helpful. I see the first question starting in parking on page four of the staff report. Would we like to start, start there? Commissioner Badami?
That was the one that I just had asked staff about, so I'll add my comments on that, and I'm all for, you know, this meeting our housing needs, and especially our affordable housing needs. We, we have a problem, and I also, too, like the idea of meeting our unmet needs for, you know, step-down seniors, move-back-home millennials. So, I, I'm considering just eliminating parking requirements altogether, and I'd be interested to hear what my fellow commissioners feel about that.
I envisioned many houses where we eliminated the parking requirement, and they can't park on the street to begin with, so it might be helpful to have a requirement to park on the property. Am I missing the point?
They could get a parking permit from the town. What, what do you mean they can't park on the street?
Some streets are very narrow, and adding more cars to those streets creates more problems. Just my thought. Commissioner Genoff?
Excuse me, I would be in favor of assessing the parcel to determine whether there were, there would be adequate space to park on site, and then require the one parking, and if, if not, then, I mean, I guess you can't require and not require, but it seems reasonable to allow, to provide for it if there's space, so it doesn't, it doesn't put the parking burden onto the, onto the public street, so. I would be in favor of reducing it to none when there didn't seem to be a need, you know, if you've got an elderly relative who isn't driving any longer in your accessory dwelling unit, you don't need a parking space for that person, as an example.
So, if I could just tag on to that, that does relate to the question about tandem or parking in a front setback?
Absolutely, yes.
As in, whether or not we'd be in favor of it? Yes, I would.
Yes.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hansen?
I, I think it's fine. I, I, I actually appreciated your comments, Commissioner Genoff. I, I do think that I'm, 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 feel both sides of it, which I think that it, we really need to encourage these accessory dwelling units. I think it makes a lot of sense. It's a great way to, to address a lot of housing needs in our town, but I, but I can't, I, I, I think there's probably some scenarios out there where there might be a need to do a parking space, so I'm not sure of the right way to do it, maybe, maybe have it be part of the checklist, and if it's possible, but not make it required. I, I, I don't know if we can do that or not, but, I mean, it, it seems like, you know, there, I, and as far as like parking on, in tandem on the driveway and that kind of thing, that seems to make sense. The only thing that, that I wanted to ask about those, there was some comment, and I think it was in the state law, about mechanical parking lifts, not enclosed, on a, on a driveway? Or, yeah.
We haven't seen any of those in town yet, but that's, they're just giving you options.
But if we, if you, but if you let it happen, it could be.
They're, they're providing you options, and we'll bring back, we actually have existing code language that deals with adding bedrooms or second stories, and looking at the site to see if there is adequate space to put another site, because we have a lot of non-conforming houses that want to do an addition, but they can't do two parking spaces. So, we'll bring that language back, so you can look at it. That may be a way to do the one or none scenario.
Well, like the, like the example we had in our testimony tonight, I mean, you know, they, they have this pool house, all they, they have it, everything all ready to go, they, you know, I mean, that's clearly a thing where they shouldn't have to have a parking spot.
And I think the reality is if you ultimately, and the council ultimately allows the tandem and then the front setback, then that's going to be a non-issue in a lot of those instances anyhow.
And also, the conversion of existing floor area doesn't require parking space. That's one of the exceptions, so.
Commissioner Hootis?
With regard to parking, I think that the proposed amendments make some sense to, that will, and I think it will help to, to accelerate the creation of affordable accessory dwelling units, and, and so particularly the allowing in the front setback and the tandem, I think are very positive, and it will, will help to, to facilitate that. When we get to eliminating parking completely, I think that that can be challenging, so I think that it's important, and I've seen in some other municipalities where they really look at the location relative to other transportation alternatives, so, and, and to do that in an objective manner, you know, not to be loose about it, but to be clear that parking could be eliminated if there is good public transit that's somewhere accessible.
So, I don't know if we want to define good public transit, but there is an exception for transit within a half mile specifically.
Right, and transit, and, and so, you know, to define the fact that it's not just transit, but it's an actual bus stop, you know, and, not that the bus drives by, you know. but it's an actual bus stop, you know, and not that the bus drives by, you know. So I think that, and I've seen in some other municipalities where they've done that, where they eliminate parking requirements based on some objective standards relative to public transit. And I also think that that then turns around the other way and, you know, sort of elevates the demand side in the town to, to put pressure on achieving better public transit as well.
Commissioner Badami, you had your hand up?
No, no longer.
Okay. I think that covers parking. Do we need definitive positions at this time, or wait till staff comes back to us?
I think what we heard, just the recap, that everyone seemed generally okay with the parking in the front setback area and its tandem. I think most of you were comfortable with this kind of zero-one scenario, with the exception of Matthew, who wants maybe some more specificity in there as far as what may lead to those opportunities. And so we'll come back with some of that.
Thank you. Permitted zones. The first question, should the allowable areas be expanded? Comment. Commissioner Genov?
I think in many ways, this restriction on the lot size is similar to what we talked about last meeting regarding the fencing policy. There are a lot of different configurations to lots in any number of zoning areas that would, that would make an accessory dwelling unit a good idea, and there are others that make it a poor idea, just based on what the lot is. So I would be in favor of, this may be radical, but I would be in favor of no particular lot restrictions, but having criteria that talks about, in the hillside area, the flatness or percent flatness of the area, I would definitely expand the hillside to below, I would expand it to any size hillside lot, just based on the configuration of the lot. I've got neighbors who own a very flat parcel, and it's one acre. It could easily accommodate a small ADU. And I think you've got a lot of lots in town that are non-conforming that could also support an ADU, and they may be bigger lot sizes than a conventional 6,000 or 7,000 square foot lot. So it doesn't seem to me to make sense to limit the ADU permit to a lot size, but take a look at the lot specifics and see if we can get to some criteria that would, that would give you some go, no-go.
And I think flexibility in the hillsides is relatively simple. You can put requirements around, you know, must be in the L R D A, has to be outside of the setbacks. So some of those things will cover any of those items. Right now, our current minimum lot size in a hillside zone is 40,000 square feet, which is just under an acre. So if you have a 40,000 square foot in HR zone, you have a conforming lot. But we do have the different designations of the one, the two and a half, five, and so on. And on the non-hillside lots, just for everyone's reference, the smallest zone in town, not including planned developments, allows for 5,000 square foot lots. So you could have a conforming 5,000 square foot R1D lot, which would still allow a ADU. So the question there is, you know, does that become the floor of the 5,000 or more on a non-conforming lot? So just something for you guys to think about that.
I would underscore your comment about clarification on hillside, that either there be a subsection or, and/or a separate section definitively explaining the restrictions or the variations to provide for the hillside.
Yeah, I think those can be added.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
So, I mean, we heard the testimony on the, you know, lots downtown and whatnot, that it seems to make sense to bring the lot size down, but it probably shouldn't be a zero. I mean, like, you know, that, I think they said, someone said Santa Cruz was like 4,500, maybe there should be some floor, but it should be less than, than, than 10,000. I mean, if you, if it was much less than 5,000, wouldn't you run into other issues with bar, with already having an existing volume? I would think you would. But, and then on the other side, as far as the hillsides, I mean, I, I live in a one, you know, primarily one-acre lot hillside neighborhood. I have space in my yard, in our property to put an ADU if we, you know, if we could. I don't know if we would, but I mean, I'm just saying. And so I can look around my own neighborhood even and say, I can see a lot of places, some lots where you could never do it, and there's lots where you could. And I would definitely think getting it below the 5,000 acre thing, I mean, it's not going to be affordable, but then you're going to have grandparents, college students coming back. I mean, you know, as I was thinking through this from my own family's perspective, I was like, you know, I have two college-age kids, you know, that when they get out of college, they may not be able to afford a place. Maybe an ADU would be a good thing. I mean, so it seems to me to be way too restrictive to keep it to, to five acres when there's a lot of valid properties, as long as we stay, you know, do a good job with our hillside design guidelines to make sure that we're not doing the wrong thing in the hills.
Other comments. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I think we should seriously look at some, the ability to put ADUs on some smaller lots. I do think that it's important to tie that to what adjacent municipalities are doing as well, because I think that it could have a significant impact on individuals' property rights and on property values. So I think it's important, you know, that we understand at least how this fits in to adjacent and in some ways competitive communities so that, you know, we, we don't do something inadvertently that puts Las Casas into a very unique position, unless we intend to do that because of, for instance, a hillside or, you know, something like that. So I think, that's where I think it's very important to look at other municipalities. In terms of deed restriction, my reaction to that is that it's been difficult for, for that. There've been examples where people, you know, it doesn't, I, I don't know whether there are better mechanisms, but it seems like deed restriction is a sort of a, a last effort to, to do that.
Commissioner, for some of us, could you explain deed restriction?
So I'm, I'm talking about...
Second question.
The second question, where the, the, there's a proposal to put language into the deed to, to enforce some of the, some of the standards and some of the requirements. So I, I don't know if that's the best way to do that.
And you would, you would have concern with that, why?
Because sometimes it isn't clear to a subsequent owner that there is a restriction. There are lots of examples, not just tonight, but in other places where sometimes it just doesn't come up on a, on a title search.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Surprised later on.
Sorry. Commissioner Hanson, you had your hand up?
I did. I, I was thinking when we did the, the housing element, that we do, at least for the purposes of the 28 units we plan for, we're requiring a deed restriction as part of getting compliance for HCD. Is that correct?
I think the, the goal of, this comes right out of the housing element, was if we get someone with AD, AMI, then that's really a low unit. We, we were providing to the state that any of the 100% units, which would be moderate, that those wouldn't require deed restriction. But if someone went the extra effort to get to the low level, that's where we would pay for their application fees. And there are fees available for that in our BMP and LO fees. That's what is contemplated to be used for those.
So having said that, I, I agree with Commissioner Hudes. I, I, or maybe I didn't totally understand what he said, but, but I, it seems to me like a deed restriction is a cap, is, is the opposite of what we want to do to encourage the production of affordable units. Because if you, if you end up selling your house, that could be a liability to the person that's buying it and all that kind of stuff. And I, it, it might prevent people from wanting to do it. And, and so I, I think if you keep the sizes of them small enough, I mean, it's going to be, as you said earlier, it's going to be relatively more affordable. But you can't, you can't completely force the economics of this stuff. So I, I, that seems like a, a thing that, a roadblock that we wouldn't want to have to encourage production of ADUs.
Commissioner Genov?
Yes, I would concur with Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Hudes on the deed restriction recommendation. I'd like to go back to the prior point. When we say we will provide that ADUs may be permitted on smaller lots, there was some discussion about a sliding scale of the size of the ADU, and I think that's an important, important criteria to incorporate, however that may be. But a 1,200 square foot maximum potential wouldn't make sense on one of those small lots. So just wanted to make sure that that gets incorporated into the expansion of the lot size.
Commissioner Badami?
I had concerns with how you could even enforce that deed restriction. How do you know that somebody's offering the rent at a reduced rent that's affordable to a lower-income renter? How, how would you even control that?
So the same way we control all of the rest of our rental affordable housing that we have in town, they have to do yearly compliance. So we have an outside company that they have to provide proof every year that they are meeting our BMP requirements for the rentals. So, you know, we, we don't have any BMPs in that arena yet, but it would be handled in the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on permitted zones? The prerogative of chair sometimes to give final note, and even though it's late, or maybe because it's late, I just, I just get anxious when I think of elective development in the hillsides. I think the housing crisis, et cetera, we should take a look at our town to do our part. But I, I'm sus, I think there are alternative views of building in the hillsides, anything that can possibly be built. And so having tried to hold the bridge for 10 years, my battle wounds are showing, and I don't, I don't want to open up any floodgates for the hills. I'm sorry. Commissioner Genov?
Just a clarification. Are, are the permissible ADUs, is a restriction that prohibits them or the, under the one, five acre, whatever it is, is that only for detached new ADUs? Or does it also restrict an ADU to be built or exist within an existing structure? Was that clear?
Yeah, it's, it's for all ADUs. If they would, that's the, it's a criteria for the lots where they would be allowed.
So you're saying that with, with respect to Commissioner Kane's concern, there would be no ADUs permitted on a lot that, currently, there would be no ADUs permitted either within the existing envelope or as a new detached on any of those hillside lots?
That's the case right now in the hillside, or in this case, it would be five acres.
And again, I think there's going to be some additional cleanups that might limit our ability to do that in AB 229.
I'd just like to follow up by saying, I, you know, in, in concert with Commissioner Kane, I think further sprawl on the hillsides is not a great idea. But those hillside homes are often quite large, and providing an accessory dwelling unit within that envelope that exists, I think, is a reasonable permit.
Commissioner Hanson?
I, I just want to argue the other side of that. So we, we see these all the time, people building pool houses and all that other stuff. I don't see the, I mean, just the devil's advocate on this is that people are building all these accessory structures, not for ADU, but, you know, they're having everything but a kitchen in them. So I don't necessarily see the difference in terms of what you're talking about of excess building in the hillside, because we're seeing people with these large lots wanting to put all these accessory structures on their lots anyways. So I, I don't, I don't see that this would change it that much. And I don't think that many people are going to do it. I think we'll have the same experience as, as San Jose, and it'll be a small number, but...
May we move on to height? Should new, should new secondary story attached accessory dwellings be allowed? Commissioner Badami?
I have some concerns with that, because you're asking for trouble with bulk and mass issues, and that leads to privacy concerns. So I have some issues with that. I'd love to hear comments from my fellow commissioners.
Just a clarification. Is, is the fif, is a 15-foot height restriction, does that apply to existing structures or only to newly built?
That would apply to new ADUs.
So if, if, for instance, you had a detached garage that has a big peaked roof already, would you be able to, without, under the current code, would you be able to add an accessory dwelling unit over the garage in, within the structure that exists?
No, you, it's one floor or 15 feet. So within the structure that exists, if it's over 15 feet, say the ridge is 16 feet, we believe you could convert that to an ADU under state law, basically.
I'm not talking about converting the garage per se, but let's say it's a garage with a high, high peaked roof, and you've got a second story effectively. So you're saying the answer is currently, as written, the, there would not, that would not be permitted?
That's correct.
So, so I would think if you've got an existing structure that's been approved as, as built, and you could accommodate an, an accessory dwelling unit within that structure that already has been approved and built, I would be in favor of that if it were a second story. That's not going to have any impact on neighborhood compatibility or, or probably any, anything at all. So I would be in favor of that as a second, as a second story permit.
Commissioner Hanson?
So I, I think I agree with Commissioner Genov. So, so we're talking about, I'm thinking of, we've heard so many times that a house that's currently a one-story, them adding on a second story for the purposes of enabling a secondary dwelling unit, or are we talking about them adding on to their garage and making it a two-story? Or is it both?
Theoretically, it could be both, if you, if you're, you know, in favor of second stories for new ADUs.
And so if it's, if, if they have a, if they're, if it's their garage and they already have a two-story, that doesn't seem as problematic as if they, unless their neighbor next door is a one-story, and, as it would be to, to add on that second story in terms of neighborhood compatibility. I mean, I, I think you'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis to, but to unilaterally say that anyone could add it a second story, I think could be, causes real problems with neighborhood compatibility. I mean, I think it could be looked at, but not, you know, a blanket okay.
So we, we've taken a conservative approach on this one. We're not sure it's going to stand up. But I would just offer that even in the existing condition of a detached structure or existing roof mass that wasn't habitable before, typically in those instances, you don't have egress windows and other windows, doors, separate entrances, things that will have to be required. And so it will impact, or potentially impact, there may be many cases where it doesn't, but it will potentially impact adjacent neighbors.
And it might be a good time to just point out again that these are ministerial permits. So they're not discretionary. They don't come before the DRC or the planning commission. They're approved at the staff level within 120 days.
Regarding what has been said on, on construction, I'd underscore neighborhood compatibility, and I'd underscore privacy issues.
Neither of which we can take into account, depending on which way you decide this question.
Come, further comments on, yes, Commissioner Badami?
So with that being said, could a neighbor appeal it? And no, it's just a done deal?
It is not. It's basically a building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Size. Should the allowable floor area of an attached accessory dwelling unit be limited to 50% of the existing floor area of the primary dwelling unit? It's certainly specific. I don't know what's magic about 50 versus 30 versus 70, but thoughts, please. Commissioner Hanson?
I think we, a couple of people had mentioned earlier about some kind of... I think we, a couple of people had mentioned earlier about some kind of sliding scale. So you have a, you have a, a 4,000, we see this all the time, we see a 4,000 or 4,500 square foot house, potentially including their cellar and whatnot. You've let them do 50% of the existing floor, then you're going to have another 2,500 square foot house. I mean, I, I don't know if they could do that with the FAR and their lot size, but, I mean, if they could, that would, that would be a problem. But I mean, as a general rule, you know, in a classic situation, I think the goal would be to make sure that the accessory dwelling unit is, is much smaller than the primary house. So I don't know if 50% is the right number, but, I mean, I, I think that's a place, that ought to be in, in the guideline somewhere.
Well, the state law allows up to 50, so that's at least a source of, of the number. It may not be the one we need to adopt, or it is?
And it's an or.
Yeah, it's an or, or 1,200, or whatever.
So 1,200 is the max. So your 2,500 scenario isn't viable.
And where are we now versus the 1,200?
Right now, our maximum for a detached accessory structure is 900, and our maximum for an attached is 750.
I kind of like those numbers, but Commissioner Hootis?
I, I was kind of interested in staff's opinion about what options we have here to, you know, because I think 50% is a bit large, particularly when you get to the, well, I think that it's, you know, you're going to be the under 1,200 square foot where that applies, but I think that in some of those, it's, it's, it's quite large. So what, what range do you think we have to work in here and still be in compliance with the law?
Well, I think you could go up to 1,200 square feet. The 50%, again, as Mr. Paulson noted, is an or. Or if you look on page three, this is the actual language, Exhibit 6, Page 3, you can kind of see that chart for the maximum size, and that talks about 50% of the living area up to, which is the same as or. So it would not exceed your maximum size. At the same time, it would limit, so if the house were, you know, 900 square feet, you'd be down to 450 square feet for the ADU.
Yeah, that's, the town attorney is offering, you could change your primary, primary and build a 1,200 square foot primary, and then keep your 900 ADU. So there's, there's, those little nuances will come up, but not very often. I think frankly, it's, the 50%, we could probably modify that, but I think the sliding scale option probably does that better. We probably get into a sliding scale of 50% or whatever that looks like going down the path. I believe Campbell used the sliding scale as the closest jurisdiction to us. So we'll, we'll look at that as kind of a starting point for discussion for the commission.
Right, and that's where, you know, my sentiment is on this, is that I think a sliding scale makes sense, and I think it ties to some of the testimony that we had tonight.
A sliding scale up to a limit?
Yes.
And, and that limit, I like the language we have. I think that's in the spirit of the ADU, but that's my opinion.
And that's kind of the second, second question, which is, we want attached and detached to both be up to 1,200 square feet. We've been talking about a sliding scale. I think we understand where Vice Chair Kane is on that.
Other thoughts?
Other thoughts on that?
I agree with Commissioner Kane. I like the language we have as well. Seems that the, the larger the unit, the higher the rent, and it kind of defeats the purpose of making it affordable anyway.
Commissioners? Commissioner Genov?
Yeah, if we can, if, if the current language will fly, I'd say keep it as small as possible. Practical.
We can definitely put that in the recommendation.
Should exceptions to floor area ratio and/or lot coverage maximum be allowed for ADUs? No. I'm sorry, other opinions? Commissioner Hanson.
So I, I thought of this as potentially a hillside versus not hillside issue, and one to mention, because I mean, you, you definitely wouldn't want to go there in the hillsides. But if you had like one of these 7,000 or 8,000 square foot lots, it, I can imagine a scenario where it might make sense in, but it might be on a case-by-case basis. I mean, but if it's going to be ministerial, then to make a blanket decision, I mean, right now, they have to comply with FAR, right? Even with the ministerial, right?
Correct.
Unless we up it for the ADUs.
Correct. So we can build an exception in for ADUs, and we'll look at some of the other jurisdictions, see what they've done. I think as was stated this evening, there are other jurisdictions that they're starting points higher than ours. So that gives them a little bit of flexibility, but I don't know that those were changed specifically for the ADU ordinance.
I mean, if we went that route, I would say you definitely want to limit it to lot sizes below a certain level versus just saying any kind of, any lot could have, you know, go over the FAR. I, I think, you know, it makes more sense for like the scenarios that were described in our testimony.
Other comments? Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of exceptions to FAR and lot coverage as a starting point. I think that, I think that it might be better to start with some of these other measures, see whether we actually get an uptake in building affordable housing this way. And then if that's working, then maybe this is the next step to take it and, and get even more, because I think there could be significant neighborhood, neighbor objections and others, and I think we're kind of, you know, throwing out our, our zoning code pretty, pretty radically by allowing exceptions to FAR and lot coverage. So I would, I would say that would be something I would reserve for later rather than for the first pass at this.
Commissioner Genov.
Yeah, I agree. I think this should not be changed. I, I'm concerned about, as you keep reminding us, this is a ministerial decision. That concerns me. So whatever, whatever changes we make to the basic language that we currently have, we probably should think twice about that, or at least have a panel discussion that talks about some unintended consequences, you know, where that could go wrong before we make those changes, so.
One sits up here long enough and, and words like exceptions, and even well-intended words like case-by-case make my skin crawl, because I just know where they're going to go. And we're going to get beat over the head with them. We're trying to do the right thing with slippage and flexibility and bang, you know, we get another castle in the sky. But like I said, it's late, so I can get away with that, right? Moving on to the final question. Should the DRC, should the Design Review Committee, the DRC, be designated as the decision-making body for applications for elimination, indoor demolition of accessory dwelling units? Commission? Commissioner Hootis?
I would just be interested in staff's discussion about this, because this is into, you know, what are the other alternatives, or are there other similar considerations that DRC is making today?
Many reasons why we ask this question. Currently, the town code requires the Planning Commission to be the deciding body when we're losing units. As the past few have come through, I can't think of one that has been denied, and the reason for that is we generally are getting more new second units than we're eliminating, so we're not reducing our overall housing stock. So does that decision still need to go to the Planning Commission? That's obviously a much larger expense for an applicant to go to the Planning Commission than it is to go to the DRC. DRC is still a public hearing, so we want to throw that option out. Now, obviously, if we get a rush of elimination and zero units in, you know, that section of the code also allows the Community Development Director to refer whatever we want to the Planning Commission. But it's just something for that type of process, if we are in fact getting more units than we're demolishing, and we don't see very many people demolishing them nowadays, then is that something that needs to rise all the way to the commission? That's, that was the main reason why we brought this forward.
I, I hate fees, and I hate, especially hate prohibitive fees. I wish there was a way we could ameliorate some of that, but I know that we have procedures where it's on a cost basis. What it costs us is what it could cost the applicant. Remind us, and the many folks back home watching tonight, who is on the DRC?
So the DRC is comprised of representatives from Building, Planning, Fire, and Parks and Public Works, depending on the type of, well, that's the only ones that would be involved in this type of application.
Okay, so it's essentially town staff?
Correct.
No commissioners, no town council members?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Comment, Commissioner Badami?
So my input to that question is, yes, let's have the Design Review Committee be the decision-making body for these types of applications. I'm comfortable with that.
Could you explain?
Well, just what the Community Development Director, Paulson, said, when it's come before us as the Planning Commission in the past, I can't think of one in four years where we denied it. So I would trust them in, in making this particular decision. It's, it's demolishing them. It's, it's not something where we have to go through a process where we evaluate compatibility with a new structure. And I think that there's enough that's going to be built that we wouldn't have to worry about it.
All right, Commissioner Hanson, you had your hand up.
I'm thinking as long as we don't allow too much flexibility in other things, like, for example, the second, the second floor units pending what we decide about that, I think that you want to encourage production of the ADUs, that the decision-making body should be the, the Design Review Committee, and that the only time it went elsewhere is if they had exceptions. So as long as there's some, you know, the, we're comfortable with the, the rules for when they can do it and where they can do it and what size it can be, then it should be ministerial, that's what the law says anyways, right?
And so this is, this, this piece specifically is talking about the elimination or demolition. The other ones, because this is a discretionary review.
Okay.
Going to, even going to DRC is a discretionary.
Oh, so this isn't for, this is only for?
This is only for demo and elimination.
They're taking them down. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Correct, yeah.
But I, but I, you know, I, I don't think that, I, I don't think we've ever seen anything where we have said no, because it would usually because they needed to do it and rebuild it, and so it's, to me, that would be ministerial as well.
Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, I think for the reasons stated, it's a good starting point to go to DRC, and if it appears to be an issue, and we're getting, you know, a rash of demolitions that's causing problems with meeting our numbers and all of that, then, then it would be the time to bring it to Planning Commission. I don't think that's the, we're at that point now. I think this is a more reasonable starting point.
Amazingly. Yes, Commissioner. I was just thinking, Commissioner Genov and I used to serve on the, together on the Historic Preservation Committee. So that would be carved out? Anything, anything to be demolished in a historic preservation district would be carved out of this provision and would still go to Historic Preservation?
Depends on the situation. Many of those, even though they might be in a historic district, they may not have been constructed in a timeframe that complies with our historic zones. So we'll have to look at that and see whether or not there's any flexibility. That's a great extra item to take a look at.
Yeah, I would, I would just give some merit to my paranoia that when it comes to historic districts or hillsides, we need to have very tight, specific language as to the decision-making body. Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, I would just underscore that, because I think there are some carriage houses and in some of the alleys that are in this category, and so if they would otherwise go to Historic Preservation Committee, I think they should continue to.
And we'll take a look at that in compliance with state law and make sure that opportunity is still there, because we obviously have other items that go to DRC that HBC has purview over that would continue similarly.
Commissioner Badami, did you have your hand up?
I'm sorry.
Did you have your hand up?
No, I did not.
All right, Commissioner Genov.
I just wanted to suggest that regarding the DRC, I'm in favor of the DRC being the decision-making body on demolitions of ADU, until such time, should it ever come to pass, that the balance of what's being requested to be demolished begin to look like it exceeds those ADUs being constructed, and then we take a look at a different decision-making process.
Yeah, you've got me walking up and down the streets of the historic districts like, like we used to do. I see all possibilities for potential abuse, not intentional, but potential abuse, and I'd, I'd like some strong language to preserve those historic structures. Anyone else? All right. Well, staff, I think you've got a hand up. Commissioner Hootis?
I, I mentioned I had several points that I would consider sort of technical things.
This would be a good time.
If I could do that, thank you.
Yes.
And actually, I don't know if these are important or not, so maybe staff could just kind of react to these and say, these are things that we should consider, or no, we don't worry about it. But just in reading this, under Section 2910-310, there's, there's language about continuous use, and it seemed to me that that may be an issue. So is that an issue or not? It says, you know, has been, has existed and been used continuously from that date for an accessory. I could see some structures which might fall in and out of use as an ADU.
So this is that section that grandfathered units in between 83 and 87. So it's left in here essentially to let, to mark that that's a period where that happened, but it has closed.
Okay, so don't worry about that one. Okay? On the next page, I'm sorry, let's see. On page... Page three, question was, how to handle a situation where an accessory dwelling unit is rented to a third party and then subsequently to a household member, and then to a third party again? Is that something that needs to be addressed? Yeah, I'm talking specifically about the, the reduced rent, where it says if the unit is occupied by someone other than a member of the household.
I think that's the process. Again, this is language directly out of the housing element.
So given your discussion this evening on the not wanting to do the deed restrictions for the lower, that gets modified ultimately. So we will pull that out, and I will make it more of a, an offering, and I know you don't like may or should, but if someone should choose to do that, then we'll, we'll have that in there.
Okay, and then just two more quickly on page four. The exceptions that are listed there, I think I mentioned this before, half, one-half mile of public transit, I think we want to make sure that it's a public transit stop or a access point. And then number five, car-share vehicle, is that well-defined elsewhere as to what a car-share vehicle is, and that being located within one block?
So again, this is language straight out of the state legislation. The car-share, I'll, I'll look to the director to see if he has an answer on the definition in Los Gatos.
So the town does not have a definition, but we will look at other jurisdictions and see if they have placed any definitions on that.
Okay.
The challenge gets to be, you know, we try to steer away from naming specific companies because those change over time, and, and so we generally understand what car-share means, but we will see if there's a definition out there that might be helpful.
Okay, so that exhausts my technical questions.
Commissioner Hanson.
I just had two really quick things. I just wanted to ask another quick question on this public transit thing, having spent a lot of time on the VTA, PPAK, and when I, I don't know what the state's intent was on the public transit, but to me, that wouldn't even really be a bus stop, because, I mean, we only have one bus in town, and being half a mile is a good 10-minute walk, and for older people, I mean, I'm, I'm just not sure. I mean, if it, as it pertains to the parking requirement, I mean, I think people in, in town are going to need a, they're going to need, you know, a they're going to need, you know, a place to put their car. So, um, I, I, I just wondered about what their intent with pub, because to me, public transit would be like a VTA-like rail station, not, um, not a bus stop. But I don't know what they intended.
I didn't read the legislative intent and go through all that background. I'm not sure if Ms. Aronowitz did.
Not to that detail on this particular question.
There's a difference between a transit station and a transit stop. And, and they wanted a transit stop for this legislation, not a transit station.
Okay, so that is, that, that was their intent?
That's what I understood it was. But we can, we can make certain that's confirmed up. And I'm, could be, there's so much I've done with the Housing Accountability Act and I'm assuming the definitions are the same. But we can look to see exactly what they meant by that half a mile.
Well, they've obviously done a lot of research in this. So, if, if their intent was, was a stop, then they, they've probably already determined through their research that it, that being, you know, within a 10-minute walk of a bus, a bus stop would be acceptable to not, you know, have, need a car. And then the only other thing that I noticed, I, I know you brought it up earlier, um, but on the page two, the thing about a maximum of two dwelling unit, we're, that's getting changed to one, right? Or the recommendation is?
So, again, this is only for those units which were existing pre-1983 and then it, basically this section, um, is there, uh, I guess in my mind to, um, explain why those units got grandfathered in. It just explains a process that's now ended and I think the attorney is saying it may not have to remain in there. But that's what this section is. It's, it's a, it was a grace period. It's a carryover, but it, when people wonder, well, why do you have a unit that was legalized and it's two stories? Or you have two ADUs that were legalized? And then we can look at our records and say that happened in 1985.
And, oh, I see, and on page three, that it says under B, um, only one and you scratch out new accessory dwelling unit may be permitted on a lot. No additional accessory dwelling unit is allowed on a lot with an existing accessory dwelling unit. So, that, that's clear, okay?
That's the new, yeah, that's the ordinance as it stands.
I'm going to make a motion, um, that the, that the Planning Commission, having considered amendments presented by staff to Chapter 29, that we move, uh, further discussion, um, to a date certain and not only to a date certain, but to include a request that we have the issue come up on the agenda as early as possible. It's very complicated, very complex. It has a broad scope. Ramifications and the consequences could be significant. I'd like to chew on this at 7:30 instead of 10:30. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Someone have their hand up. Commissioner Houdis? No?
Not about that.
All right. All who's in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you very much.
And that date certain that we would recommend would be November 8th. They're just confirming that's okay with the rest of the commission. November 8th is when we will bring it back.
That's a regular date, right?
Correct.
So, we move ahead to item... Four? Take a minute. We move ahead to a report from the Director of Community Development.
Thank you. Briefly, this evening, last week, council met. The 105 Newell application that you forwarded a recommendation of approval for was on that agenda. However, given the length of other items, they continued it early on in the process anticipating that they wouldn't be able to get to it that evening. They also completed the public testimony portion of the public hearing for Alberto Way, that office building that was denied. And so, that appeal will be, as Ms. Dorner mentioned this evening, the deliberations will take place, um, next Tuesday on October 3rd for that item. And then finally, the North Forty Moratorium was extended, an additional 10 days and 15, 10 months and 15 days, so that we can look at completing modifications. We will begin or have those discussions, uh, on next Tuesday as well, on October 3rd with the town council.
I'd also just, uh, give you an update on the motion for attorney's fees that was filed by Groszner in Summerhill. They were asking for $600,000 in attorney's fees and about $90,000 in costs. The court denied their motion for attorney's fees and gave them nothing and gave them $35,000 in costs.
Fascinating. On that note, this meeting is adjourned.